...for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When did the ones look?
Ms. Opel, you want to give the TV announcement and the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the role, Commissioner Gottstanker, Commissioner Overall, Commissioner Burrows, Commissioner Phillips, and Commissioner Birig.
Here.
Thank you.
Director Black, the Agenda Status Report.
Mr. Chair, yes, you have three items on your agenda this morning, and they're all ready to move forward.
Okay.
And you want me to go on to the projection report?
Yes, please, if you would.
Sure. Your next meeting, first meeting of January, will be January 16th, the third Wednesday of the month, and we have the Miramar Hotel Conceptual Review Project on for your commission's review. We're not seeking a decision yet, we're not that far along in the process, but we, I think, appreciate any feedback that the commission has. We also have an ordinance amendment to conform the Resource Management Zone District in Montecito to the rest of the county's requirements. So we will be bringing forward an ordinance amendment which would require any permits for development in the Resource Management Zone to apply for a development plan, which would be subject to the direct review of the commission. So you wouldn't be seeing projects on appeal, you'd be the decision-maker on those projects. Just a couple of items to note on county planning commission agendas. On January 23rd, we are going to be conducting two briefings with the county planning commission that I thought your commission may be interested in. One is on greenhouse gas emissions and how that, the department and the county as a whole are treating the evaluation of greenhouse gas emissions in both plan development and in project review and analysis under CEQA. We're also going to be conducting an affordable housing workshop, following up from the housing element discussion that occurred later on last, or earlier this year. On February 6th, the county planning commission will receive a briefing on the annual work program for land use planning projects and policy initiatives as well. And then we'll be having a county planning commission retreat, which we will be inviting the chair of the Montecito Planning Commission to attend, and--
What day is that retreat again?
It's on February 8th, a Friday.
Thank you.
And I think it's planned to be from 10 till 3, roughly. Your next meeting in February is on February 20th, and you do have a briefing on that day on proposed water-efficient landscape design guidelines from the Montecito Water District. They requested to provide you a briefing, and so we'll be bringing that forward, assuming you still have time on that agenda for the briefing. And that's really all I wanted to point out this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Baker, do you have a report for us today?
Mr. Chair, there was the commission. Nothing that has been before the board that I can remember. Diane and I both looked at that and said nothing since you met last. I'd like to take this opportunity, not necessarily for you, but for the general public, to announce that we will be closed on the Christmas Eve, December 24th, and New Year's Eve, the 31st. Want to make sure that this announcement gets out to people that want to submit stuff, but maybe even people that aren't interested in necessarily planning and development, but recordations of maps and things like that, that if they wanted to get that done, they've got to get it done by the, I guess it's the 28th, because the 31st, we will be closed. Secondly--
Does that apply to all the county?
Yes, the entire county will be closed, and that's why I wanted to make sure that that announcement was made. As well as, of course, the holidays. Then, I apologize, I was not at the luncheon that was held a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, I have a responsibility with the Agricultural Advisory Committee that's every first Wednesday of the month, and it went much longer than I had expected, so I was, I'm sorry I wasn't there to be a part of that festivity. And then, last of all, just to say that I hope you all have a happy holiday that starts for all of us the end of this week.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Baker, will you be, will your office be tracking the Westmott litigation now in-- do you call it Superior Court here, is that what we are? I'll lose the decision.
Yeah, it came down this way.
The Superior Court decision is in, so we'll, but we will continue to track to see if it's going any further.
Can you tell me what it is?
Essentially, the writ of mandate was denied. And so, if you want to call it, the decision you made was upheld.
They upheld our--
In all--
The decision you made and that the Board of Supervisors made. I should have made that announcement, I was thinking stuff before the board, not before our court.
Thank you very much for bringing that up, I thought that was important, to see that that had finally gotten settled, should be finally settled, never know. Let's see, now is our time for public comment, and if there's anybody here who wishes to speak on an item that's not on our regular agenda now would be the time to do so. And I don't believe we have any speaker slips, so moving on, we have, our next item on the agenda is the planning commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Phillips, you want to start with anything?
I don't have anything that interesting. Mr. Chairman, let me, not surprising. Let me just mention briefly for the, for the good people who are filming us today, I was watching a 2004 hearing we did to review an issue that tangentially would come up today, and what a difference it makes, folks, when you zoom in on the speaker, it's just a better viewing experience. If you do a long shot, we can't tell who's speaking, and depending on what is said, that's sometimes important. I wouldn't want to be accused of anything Mr. Birig says, for instance, you know, by mistake. So if you guys can do that, it would be a better viewing experience up there, for those who are watching. Thanks.
You're saying it's sometimes unclear as to who's actually making the comments that are being made?
Indeed, I, I speak to an older couple in the community that actually watches this show, and forever, they thought Bob McReberian was someone else. They just couldn't believe, when they finally got a close-up, that it was his voice, they thought it was, I don't know whose, maybe yours or mine, I don't know.
That's, that's very interesting. Commissioner Burrows.
No report.
Commissioner Gottstanker.
No.
And Commissioner Overall.
Nothing to report.
Nor do I. It's nice to be in the holiday season, it's been a little slow. Plus, it hasn't been that long since our last, our last meeting as well. Moving on, we have our, next item on our agenda is the Planning and Development Divisional Briefing.
Mr. Chair, we do have a divisional briefing this morning, and before I forget, I just wanted to mention that the Miramar project did go to the Montecito B.A.R. on Monday, and story polls are, I think, still up.
Yes, they're up.
And so I just encourage planning commissioners, if they haven't had an opportunity, to see those story polls, to go out, because we will probably not have them up very much longer. They tend not to--
Do you know what the timeframe is for interested people that are interested to make sure?
I would say if people want to see them, they should really get out this week.
This week, okay.
Just the integrity of the story polling--
Right, especially in the rain and so forth.
Exactly, I don't even know what kind of condition they are in after the, after the rain.
They looked at it from last week, really well done.
Right, and we are photo documenting them, but it's not the same as going out yourself and seeing them, so just wanted to remind you of that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And, Mr. Chair, at our last meeting, the commission had requested some information about our zoning enforcement program, and so I've asked Ms. McCarthy to come this morning and brief you on just the basic tenants of the program, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Black, I noticed on the Miramar agenda for January, you've allocated an hour. Is that, that hasn't been our experience with other big projects.
Which item was that?
The Miramar.
Oh, Miramar, yes.
Is that, is it--
No.
Wishful thinking?
Mr. Chair, actually, we've allocated an hour for staff, four hours total.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I missed that.
So, I think we're good.
So it's, it's going to be a full presentation, yeah?
Yes, I would expect that, that the applicant will give a fairly full presentation of the basic components of the project, and then our experience has been that a number of people from the public have wanted to speak, and we want to provide, obviously, time for the commission to provide comments.
I think that is likely, we'll see, hear a lot of public participation in the beginning.
I mean, hopefully, it won't be longer than four hours, but we wanted to make sure we had a sufficient amount of time.
Commissioner Gottstanker.
Yes, and with regards to that, I noticed that in our binders for the last couple of times, that we no longer are receiving the, like, big, full set of drawings. You know, we used to, like, we used to get our binder, and then for certain projects, we would get the entire set of drawings that applied at the full, at the full scale, you know, the 24 by 36, or the 42 by 36. And I just want to make sure that when the Miramar comes before us, that we really do have, maybe not the entire roll that M.B.A.R. went through, because it was, I mean, I was at that hearing, and it was, there was a lot of stuff there. But at least, if Michelle, the planner, could kind of sift through that and determine, you know, the full-size sheets that we might be able to see. I mean, with the project that's coming up today, it was, for me, extremely difficult to actually be able to determine what was going on on these 8 by 10 sheets that have been reduced down from a full-size sheet. You, I needed my magnifying glass to go over and over and over them, so something, I don't, you know, I just wanted to communicate that to staff, that, you know, I think on some projects, I mean, I know I always say, listen, don't give me all this stuff, but some projects, it really is necessary to have that in order to be able to do our work.
Yeah, I tend to agree, I found on, on our third item today, that that would have been very useful to have, to have them again, yeah. So--
And as long as we're talking about that, can we get a full set in here for that, for that item?
For Larkorah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that a set's in here by the time you take your first break.
Great, that'd be great.
Well, yes. Commissioner Overall.
Two things, I failed in the information briefing to indicate that, and this triggered it, that I attended a portion of the M.B.A.R. hearing on, conceptual hearing on the, on the Miramar, and I would offer a comment on that. I left after about, oh, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes, because they got into the plans, and there was no projection up on the screen. You had a significant number of people in the audience who, unless they had spent a lot of time with the plans, would have no idea what, what was being discussed. And I found it to be, I would have liked to have stayed, I wanted to be more informed on it, get a heads up on it, but I couldn't follow it, so I would suggest that that might be something to be considered at the M.B.A.R. level.
Please proceed.
Chairman Birig, members of the commission, my name is Kimberly McCarthy, and I'm a senior planner with the zoning enforcement program, which is under the Building and Safety Division. I'm primarily zoning enforcement, that's my primary duty, and I've spent several years working in this position. So with that, I've provided what I hope to be a very brief presentation, which will leave a majority of time for questions that your commission may have. The goals of the enforcement program are primarily to achieve compliance with the requirements of the Land Use and Development Codes, and the zoning ordinance, Article 2, which still remains in effect. We do our best to try to approach each complaint in a fair and impartial manner, and be as uniform in applying the rules of the ordinances and the development codes as possible. We hope to deter violations of the Land Use Development Codes and the zoning ordinance by our efforts to bring people into compliance and get the word out to the public about zoning and planning requirements, permit requirements, and the consequences of not doing things in the proper manner and the proper timeframe. We also support the goals of the program, the Planning and Development Program in general, by protecting the public health, safety, welfare, and the resources and community values. Under the Board of Supervisors' direction, the program has been designed to be reactive or complaint-driven. In other words, we, our enforcement planners do not go out into the community looking for enforcement issues or violations. We receive complaints and investigate once we have received those complaints. We generally do not respond to anonymous complaints unless there's a threat of intimate-- I can never say that would help in safety issues. Enforcement actions are primarily confidential, particularly the reporting party information. That information is not given out to the public or to the property owner that may be the subject of the complaint. Our program is designed primarily to resolve violations, not to punish or, or cause undue hardship to the violation, property owner that has the violation. And we also seek to recover the administrative costs associated with all the planners' actions to bring the property into compliance with the development codes. You may notice in your packet that there's a full-size flowchart, since this one is almost impossible to read on the screen. I'm not going to go into any great detail on this flowchart. Some people like flowcharts, other peoples, other people don't. I, for one, really don't like them, and don't find them very intuitive, but it does give, hopefully, an idea of the interplay both between the Building and Safety Division, what we do when we receive complaints that are not under Planning and Development's criteria or codes, and under our enforcement action. And hopefully, it's fairly detailed in terms of all the steps necessary from receiving the complaint to resolving the violation. I do have some basic, you know, high points of the program. Basically, upon receipt of a complaint, we check to see whether or not it's actually under the Development Code's jurisdiction. For example, if it's a question about hedge height, that's not subject to Planning and Development, there's no code requirement that monitors hedge height or vegetation height, so that would not be something that we would pursue. If it's a complaint regarding a leaking septic system, might be outside of our jurisdiction, we'll go and contact the reporting party and/or transfer the call to Environmental Health Services. So once we've determined that it really is subject to the Development Code, the zoning ordinances, we'll then begin to pursue enforcement. Our first step is to provide an initial contact letter that advises the property owner on the assessor's records of the violation complaint, that it hasn't been verified, and that we will be conducting a site inspection within five to seven, five to 10 business days. This, this was set up and designed so that property owners had an opportunity to identify any issues on their property and proactively pursue abatement of the violation with minimal interaction on staff's part. Or to, to kind of hasten the process of getting a site inspection scheduled and getting the process moving. Once we have, either received information from the property owner saying, oh, yes, I probably do have an issue, can you come out and take a look at it for me? Or if we haven't heard from the property owner, we conduct a site inspection. This process typically is fairly straightforward. We go out, identify ourselves, ask permission to be on the site. For given permission, we investigate the nature of the complaint and try to determine the validity of the complaint, whether or not there's really a violation. The process of the determination sometimes can be complicated, reviewing old records, assessor's records, that type of information. But once we've verified that a violation actually exists, then the process becomes a question of whether or not it can be permitted, and whether or not the property owner wants to seek a permit and after-the-fact permit, or abatement or removal is required. The structure couldn't be permitted in its current configuration, or the use could not be permitted under some sort of permit path. If the permit path is chosen by the property owner to pursue, or to abate the violation, then they are also subject to a processing fee penalty under the Board of Supervisors' adopted fee schedule. The fee schedule says that you will pay double the permit costs, up to $2,000. So if you wait to get your permit after you build your structure, you're going to be paying twice for that actual permit. Once the permits are issued, and sometimes, as you know, if it's a discretionary permit and requires Board of Architectural Review and other things, this can be a somewhat longer timeframe. But once the permits are issued, and the building permits issued, and the work is completed, then the enforcement case is closed. At this point, the property owner is billed for the administrative costs associated with the planner, the enforcement planner's time to bring them into compliance. So if the process is relatively straightforward, the property owner moves quickly to obtain the necessary permits or abate the violation, then those administrative costs are generally low. If it's a more difficult case, and the property owner is reluctant, or unwilling, or doesn't move forward quickly, then those fees can become quite extensive. And those fees are collected regardless of whether there is a penalty fee for a permit application. Those, those fees are standard once the case is, is closed. In the best of our worlds, we get an abatement in a timely fashion with relatively little back and forth between the property owner and staff, but on occasion, we, we are not able to gain compliance in the usual channels. And our primary tool for encouraging property owners to bring a violation, abate a violation, or bring a property into compliance, is the administrative fine program, and that's under County Code, Chapter 24A. This, this program is designed to provide 30 days in which a violation is abated in a particular manner, either a permit is applied for, or a structure is demolished, whatever is appropriate to the case. If after that 30-day notification, the violation has not been abated, or the first steps per the notice of violation have not been taken, then they are subject to up to fines of $100 per day for that 30-day timeframe. And that's for each violation. So if you have multiple violations on your property, you get $100 per day, per each violation, so they keep increasing and increasing. If we send out a second notice of violation, you haven't complied in the first 30 days, and you get your notice of determination of fine, we send out a second notice of violation, then the fines increase to $200 per day, per violation. After the third and subsequent notices of violation, the fines go up to $500 per day, per violation, and that can be extremely expensive. If we're starting on our third and fourth or fifth notice of violation, and notice of determination of fine, we very rarely have gone beyond the third notice of violation. It doesn't happen very often.
Commissioner Overall.
Ms. McCarthy, question, all these fines are imposed on the owner of the property, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, that is correct, the property owner per the assessor's records.
Looking through the rest of the documents, I didn't see anything that made any reference to contractors, so I have a question related to that. Is there any, is there any provision to assess fines against contractors who perform work where there is no permit issued?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, there's really not anything, any ordinance that allows us to go after contractors, or, you know, anyone who might be responsible. Renters is another, another issue. Sometimes we have people in rental situations where the property owner hasn't created a violation, it's the renter. We do attempt to go after the responsible party, but if we're unsuccessful, we will always charge the property owner in question, and then leave it up to them to get compensated from their contractor, or their renter, whoever's created the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Burrows.
Following up on that, if an owner of a property sells it to, sells the property to a new owner without disclosing the violations, does the fine adhere to the previous owner or the new owner?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, the owner at the time that the violation is identified is responsible for the payment of any fees or fines or penalties that are assessed as a result of the abate, the enforcement action. We have had instances where we've had property change, a violation's been identified, and the property changes hands. We try to make sure that we file a notice of noncompliance on the title, so that the property owner, the other purchaser, with their due diligence, can be fully aware of the potential costs associated with it. When it's very clear that a previous property owner has created the situation or is dealing with the situation, we do attempt to go for the fines and the penalties through the original owner. If we are unsuccessful, unfortunately, it does go to the owner of record at the time.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I know nothing about this, I'm not suggesting that you're not correct, since I know you are an expert, but how would the prior property owner, the one who initiated the problem, be able to cure the problem? There's steps of noncompliance, and the fees and penalties go up. Isn't it that the instant property owner absorbs the fine and then looks to the prior owner for repayment and cures it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, that's correct. That's the straightforward, standard way. We attempt to be as fair as we can and as equitable as we can, but yes, that is the proper procedure.
Proceed.
Thank you. This really is just, kind of just for your information, this is a graph of the reported violations over the last seven calendar years, primarily just for information. It's kind of interesting to see some years are much higher than others. And the final slide is just a breakdown of this year's complaints by category. This is, should be just Montecito, yeah, I'm sorry. As you can tell, commercial use of residences is fairly high. The bulk of the violations are into unpermitted developments or structures. The other categories that are quite high are walls and fences, and as well as unpermitted residential dwelling units, et cetera. But no one category stands out substantially higher than, than some of the others, so. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes, thank you, that was an excellent presentation. Is it, when I look at the graph, do, of Montecito Community Plan Area reported violations, do we, do we come away with this, assuming that in 2005, the neighbors who snitch on people were just not up to it that, that year? Is this how this works?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I'm not entirely sure how to answer that question. But I think, like, everything, you know, permits fall and rise, and I think there's just kind of a, kind of a fluid motion to all of this, but yes, you could look at it that way, that, or maybe people were just on their best behavior in 2005.
Well, on a more serious note, is it, should I be surprised that the county relies on snooping neighbors to, to enforce such an extraordinarily important issue? I mean, there's police powers associated with this, some of this is public safety. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if, if you watch the county's budget hearings and discussions we've had over the years on zoning violations and our zoning enforcement program, I would say you shouldn't be surprised. But I think some people in the community do have a different expectation that, that there is a more proactive enforcement program. We do address health and safety issues that are observable by our building inspectors. We don't turn a blind eye to those, but, you know, essentially, land use violations, unless they're really, really egregious, and if they are, we usually receive a complaint anyway, just are not proactively sought out at the direction of the board.
Could you identify, this, we have a black and white violations-by-complaint category. What is the 20% category?
We have a colored one, please.
You do?
I don't.
Oh, you do.
I ran out of ink for me.
In the back.
And since I'm colorblind, this probably isn't going to help me, anyway. It isn't going to help me. Is the 20% the commercial use of residence complaint?
No.
No. Commercial's nine. And what is the 20%, the leader in the category?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, it's the unpermitted development or structures. It's the, typically, it's like the small accessory structures that get built without permits, or it could be an addition that gets started prior to the permitting being completed or even applied for.
And who's tied for 16%?
That is, I might not have a color one either, that is walls and fences and illegal dwelling units.
Okay. And how about signs? That's surprising to me, since we have so few--
4% signed. Signs, I've found, have been primarily linked to more commercial areas-- Signs I've found have been primarily linked to more commercial areas. Montecito doesn't have a lot of commercial zoning or commercial development, and so I think subsequently less signage violation complaints.
Mr. Chair, remember, we're talking about this year so far, 28 reported violations. So these percentages are, in real numbers, are quite small.
Very small.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report. If there are no more questions.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, the next item is the minutes of our meeting of October 29. And if anybody has corrections or augmentations to the minutes, if not, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of these.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If they've been moved in second at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And we are now ready for our standard agenda, the first item being the Dalzell, the wall at 1251 East Valley Road. And I believe this is the continuation of our hearing from our meeting of November 29. Ms. Oakland, you want to read this item into the record?
I'm going to have Mr. Moore read items into the record and then I'll do roll call for the vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, you mentioned that last time. Mr. Moore.
The following is the hearing on the request of William J. Dalziel to consider case number 07 CUP 41, application filed on May 21, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303E of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. So we're ready for the staff presentation on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Joe Ritterbeck. I'm the planner for the Dalziel project. Project is located at 1251 East Valley Road, west of Hot Springs Road and east of Sycamore Canyon Road. Project was continued from the November 29 hearing and has been revised in accordance with PND and commission comments at that hearing. Project site is a 0.11 acre parcel situated adjacent to Montecito Creek, Zone 2E1, single-family Existing permitted development includes a flood control wall located along Montecito Creek, a single-family dwelling, which received variance at the last hearing, and an exempt perimeter wall where the portion curving along East Valley Road has been reduced from seven feet, six inches to six feet in height as measured from natural grade, creating an exempt wall. The revised project before the commission today is only for the section of the wall constructed on top of the floodway wall, highlighted here in yellow. This photo shows the original seven foot six wall. This photo shows it now reduced to six feet in height, creating an exempt wall. This photo shows the original section of wall that's before you today, located on top of the existing floodway wall. This photo shows the top that's been removed to match the existing wall that curves around The proposed project, excuse me, the proposed project received conceptual review from MBAR on August 13 with the following comments. Masonary was aesthetically pleasing, unique, and appropriate. It supported the wall because it did not loom over the road. And the wall was protection from a high number of accidents near the house. On staff's analysis, the project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and the Montecito Community Plan policies. And the project is in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Montecito LUDC 2E1 Zone District, subject to approval of the minor conditional use permit. Staff believes the project to be consistent with all applicable land use policies, including neighborhood compatibility. As the wall continues the line of the exempt front wall per PND and commission's request, the wall additionally screens the home from vehicle lights along East Valley Road and MBAR supports approval of the existing wall. Staff recommends the commission adopt the required findings as specified in Attachment A, accept the sequoia exemption as specified in Attachment B, and approve the project subject to conditions of approval in Attachment C. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenbach. Let's see, now would be the time for planning commissioners to declare site visits and ex parte. I know from our meeting last week that all of us have seen this before. Does anybody have any ex parte to add?
No, I don't.
It doesn't look like it. So continuing on, now would be the time for the applicant to make any presentation they wish to make.
Our family, tribe, we have a personal code.
Excuse me, would you mind?
We have a personal code of ethics.
For the record, could you state your name?
I was given the name William Jarvis Dalziel. I was adopted. No, as you pronounce it, Dalziel, Dalziel, whatever way you want to pronounce it.
You don't want to take my pronunciation of anything.
I don't want to take your pronunciation of anything.
That's correct.
There's something you have to know that happens. Assume whether you're cooperative with the County of Santa Barbara and Caltrans and tear down whatever walls and put up chain link fences, which I did immediately. I did everything everybody asked me to immediately. And 16 months later, I find out I could just tear down a foot and a half of the wall. During that time, the county put a lien on my property immediately. They didn't check to see if I was complying or going to be in compliance, because I was immediately. What are you looking at? The ACLU, they're watching it now. So they put a lien on the property. Now that lien means I can't refinance, I can't sell. It's on my record, I guess. So that's the blackmail they use to make you. So you guys have pretty good stuff. You don't have to look for more ways of punishing someone for violating a political code. Your punishments are enough. I built that wall because when I talked to Randy and Bill of Safety 10 years ago, they told me it was going to take two to three years to get a permit for it. And they were just toddlers playing in the backyard. And the semi trucks and the cars that go through and hit, actually hit the house, knocked down the corner of the house one night at 3:00 in the morning, someone delivering a So I decided, as a safety issue, I could build that wall up safe enough to keep the cars out six, eight months. And I did. And I did it so that the cars wouldn't, so they could play in the backyard. We didn't have yards where I live. We have little spaces like patios. So now that I can, they have their gym out there and they can play there. I've taken the wall down now and now people can stand on Caltrans rocks, if you go back to some of those slides, which they have done, I don't know if it's one of you people or not, have stood on that wall and looked over the wall into my property. And now all the sightseeing buses, the semis that go around there all stare right into It's my consideration that, and I'm not talking to you people anymore, but it's my consideration is that you violated one of my constitutional rights, and that is to protect my family And my family has declared the five of you enemies of our family. And if we ever see you in public or in a point a finger at you and declare that's what you are, because you're not helping. If I tried to get a permit for the wall today, it might take four years. I've had to prove that I've not harmed the oak tree in front of my property. I've had to hire biologists to prove that I haven't hurt any plants on my property. I've had to fight with your flood control people for over a year to prove that I'm not in their 100-year flood zone. So I think you've got plenty of punishment on your side for people because the way you process getting anything done, there's a wall, I don't know if you can see it, there's a wall from that corner of my property across the creek, Jack's house. He's got a 10-foot-high concrete block wall, unpainted, six feet from the property line. You drive by it every day. But because the shrubs grew up, nobody complained. Then he added two feet to the top of it. I don't care. But you, do you want me to, do you want the neighbors to start doing that? Because somebody's doing it to you? You are a good description of socialism at work. And we all know that communism comes from socialism, because we need people, especially you, who start thinking of ways of punishing people more for breaking some political code? Not safety, not traffic, not health, not flood. I think you're punishing everybody enough. So I don't care what you say. I'm going to tear the whole wall down. And you all can look in there and you can look at all the rebar in it. And that's the way it's going to be. I'm not going to build anything nicer anymore, because you don't appreciate it. And I locked you into my house with your husband. Don't smile at me. You're terrible. I locked you through my house and I helped your failed husband.
Excuse me, sir.
And I showed you everything and you betrayed my trust.
Excuse me, sir.
My men were making, you want me to stop?
We appreciate your comments, but the personal attacks won't help.
What do you think you're doing to me? I'm an individual, private property owner.
We appreciate your private, we are a society of laws and rules.
You are.
Yes, we are. That's exactly correct. But we do appreciate your position.
We appreciate anything. Wish it hadn't happened. That's what you wish.
Now is the time for members of the public to present testimony on this item. If there's anybody that's submitted a speaker slip. It doesn't look like we have any speaker slips. If there's anybody that wishes to address us on this item, now would be the time to do so. Not seeing anyone, I will close the time for public comment. Unless staff has any additional comments on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'm not quite sure what to say, but I would recommend that the commission take whatever action you think is appropriate on this project, notwithstanding the testimony you just received, to provide full options for the property owner, should he decide to retain the wall. So if.
Absolutely. We understand people can get very emotional about issues related to their personal property and we understand that.
Right. And I'm going to resist explaining how long it would take to get permits, because it's a conversation we can have.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, it's to the commission for deliberation and motions. Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Take your chances. Commissioner Burrows.
I'm inclined to accept the recommendations from the county in regard to this issue. Is that a motion? If you'd like that, yes, I move that the planning commission accept the recommendations from the county in regard to this project.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, just as a matter of procedure and terminology as we move forward on these motions, rather than use the word "accept," I'd recommend you say, move that we adopt the staff's recommendation. Thanks.
Ready?
Yes.
I move that we, I move that we, I'm sorry, I move that we adopt the recommendations of the county in regard to this project.
And that's seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips.
Question for county council. I voted not to approve the setback violations on the building structure at the last hearing. That position was not upheld by this commission. But can I now, with that violation still, with my belief that that is in violation, can, is it inconsistent for me to accept the wall then?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission and Commissioner Phillips, it's not inconsistent. First, it's separate permit path and, but secondly, in terms of approving a permit where there are, in your view, violations on the property, it's my understanding from staff that violation has been corrected. So on both grounds, I mean, on either ground, you can proceed.
No, my objection was that the House is in setbacks and this commission provided a variance. But in a coastal permit, and I think, is this coastal?
No.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, just to be very clear, the action of the commission at your hearing in November essentially remedied the violation with respect to the structure, and the only thing left was to deal with the wall. And the commission made it clear that you did not want to issue or approve a CUP for a wall that was higher than eight feet or higher than allowed six feet around the perimeter. So what the property owner has done is reduce the height of the wall to six feet, and the only section that is requiring that CUP is the part that sits on the flood control wall to match the six foot. And you had indicated at that hearing that you thought that was an appropriate design solution.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I misunderstood or did not recall that the problem that you had was the issue that was legally cured by the remainder of the commission's approval of the variance.
Okay. So there is no problem, there is no distinction here.
There's no inconsistency.
And just as a last bit of discussion, I think that continuing wrapping the wall around, I think, makes complete sense on this item. So let's see, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Aye?
Aye.
Sure, let's take a break for, until, we'll come back at 10 o'clock. On our agenda is the Zakara Coastal Development Permit at 1107 Channel Drive. Mr. Moore, you want to read this item into the record, please?
The following is the hearing on the request of Everett Woody, architect for the owners, to consider case number 07 CDH 29, application filed on September 20, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303E of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. Mr. Gage, we're ready for your presentation on this item.
Mr. Chair, before Mr. Gage starts his presentation, I just wanted to introduce him to the commission. I think this is his first presentation to your planning commission. We're very pleased to have him on board.
Thank you for pointing that out and nice to have you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Eric Gage and I will be presenting staff's recommendation. My name is Eric Gage, and I will be presenting staff's recommendation for this project, 07CDH29. The applicant is requesting a coastal development permit to construct accessory structures on a residential site, including pool-adjacent pergola, a gym pavilion, and generator enclosure. Staff recommends approval of the project. The subject property is a 1.1 acre parcel located entirely within the coastal zone appeals jurisdiction, Zone 1E1, located at 1104 Channel Drive. The subject parcel is surrounded by other residential parcels of similar size and shape. Existing development on the parcel includes 4,445 square foot single-family residence, 800 square foot garage, 750 square foot attached residential second unit, 580 square foot cabana, 147 square foot outdoor shower. Proposed development on the site includes the 230 square foot pool-adjacent pergola, 500 square foot gym pavilion, and 147 square foot generator enclosure. These are the front and rear elevations for the proposed gym pavilion, gym pavilion south and north elevations, and the pool-adjacent pergola plan view and elevations. Views from Channel Drive facing north, views from Butterfly Lane facing east. The Montecito Board of Architectural Review gave a favorable conceptual review of the proposed project on October 8th of this year, directing the project to return for preliminary final approval on consent. And BAR made the following comments: The project looks discreet. Show landscape screening and how it ties in with previous approved landscape. Study screening on the corner. Do not extend the bamboo. Project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and Montecito community plan policies. The project is in compliance with all applicable requirements of Article II Coastal Zone Ordinance for 1E1 Zone District, subject to the approval of the requested coastal development permit with hearing. The proposed project is consistent with applicable policies pertaining to neighborhood compatibility. On October 8th, BAR gave a favorable conceptual review of the proposed project, directing the project to return for preliminary final approval on consent. Prior to issuance of the permit, the project will require final approval from BAR. The proposed project is consistent with applicable noise policy associated with construction activity and the emergency electrical generator. For preparing conditions, the applicant must demonstrate noise levels of 65 decibels or lower at the property line, and construction activity will be limited to weekdays between 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. The proposed project is consistent with applicable habitat preservation policy. The site is located in the area identified by California Natural Diversity Database as potential habitat for monarch butterflies. A site visit was conducted by butterfly specialist Dr. Dan Mead, who made the determination that no sensitive habitat was located on site, and the proposed project would have no direct or indirect impact on butterfly habitat. Staff recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the required findings, accept the exemption, and approve the project. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gage. Now's the time for our planning commissioners to declare site visits ex parte. Commissioner Gottsinger, we'll start with you.
I had no ex parte on this project, and I did drive by.
Commissioner Overall?
No ex parte, and I did walk by.
Commissioner Burrows?
I visited the site.
Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte, and I looked through the fence.
I also visited the site, and no ex parte communications. We're ready for the applicant's presentation if they wish to make one on this item. It doesn't appear so. And if anybody wishes to, members of the public wishes to address us on this item, I have no speaker slips. Now would be the time to do so. Not seeing anyone, I will close the time for public comment. And unless staff has any additional comments, we'll put it back to the commission. Looks like not, so this item looks fairly straightforward. Any comments from the commissioners or questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reviewed the 2004 hearing that resulted in the permit for the existing home the other day. I walked by there almost every day, and I was shocked how much that house blocks that, the viewer of the mountains. And I was surprised that I voted for this. And I looked at the tape again, and unfortunately, we relied on screening, the hedge, as the answer to this problem. And we went back and forth as to how high it should be. Commissioner Kilcher thought it was at a certain height, the applicant thought it was lower, or higher, I can't remember. But anyway, and we finally clicked it back to MBAR to determine how high that hedge should be maintained. I doubt it's as high as it should be, and I need, I'd like to find that number. Also, the home was supposed to be 20 feet above sea level. And I'm wondering, especially given the zoning briefing we had earlier, is, could it be that that got higher somehow, and no one is, no one has called in? Or is there an independent measurement that was done in, during the permit process?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, as, I'll try and answer your second question first. I would be astounded if it got higher, because we do inspections throughout the development of a piece of property, and the building inspectors are out there to ensure that projects are built according to plan. Now, I don't know if an elevation survey was done at the completion of this. It's a pretty standard procedure now, but I don't know that it was done with this particular building. As to the hedge, I don't, I didn't review the tape, so I'm not remembering this particular item. And I don't know if the architect here today is the same architect that was before you.
Different architect, different owner. This home is uniquely forward on Channel Drive, and these pictures I thought were interesting. The viewer to protect is from the, from the beach and the road. This is a different angle, and it's kind of nicely not blocking the mountains. You stand in front of this, and it's a whole different perspective. I think, I know I'm never going to do this again, and I would ask my colleagues to not rely on the screening issue any longer. It just doesn't work. It just doesn't.
Commissioner Gottsinger?
I would, I would agree with Mr. Phillips. I think this is beginning to show up more and more with projects that, having been at the MBAR hearing on Monday, there was a project in which, you know, the house was significant, and the applicant was directed to screen it. Now, given that in relationship to new landscape watering standards that may or may not be coming, I mean, they're being proposed by the Montecito Water District, I think there's even more reason for both this board and the MBAR not to depend on what we could call the natural environment, you know, plants, you know, to screen or mitigate the architectural guidelines and the community plan as far as the built environment is concerned. I mean, given that I'm in that business, you, there's no way you can depend on forever that a hedge is going to remain, or that a hedge will be a certain height, you know. And we don't even have any way of governing that right now. You know, walls and fences, yeah, we just went through walls and fence. But so I, you know, I really agree with Commissioner Phillips. I think this commission needs to, you know, really look at this, you know, and not depend on the screening anymore. I mean, right now, you know, we've got screening in Montecito that is just not going to be there probably within the next year or so. The myoporum hedges that we've used consistently in the landscaping business to screen Montecito are majorly, majorly sick. You know, they, I mean, they've got, they've got a horrible, horrible new bug. They haven't even developed a spray for it that's going to kill it. And we're going to see those hedges disappearing. And I think that we're, not the pittusporum, but the myoporum, the very fast-growing, you know, I think it's really ugly, but that's my personal opinion. I just don't like that plant. But, you know, I really think that we really are going to have to look at that particular parts of, of our requirements that people screen, you know, and that that mitigates a project that may be too large, too close, whatever it is, you know.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, our authority is six feet. It's a, it's a wall, and beyond, and that's it. If it can't be screened at six, we have to not assume it's going to be.
Well, actually, no, that's six feet at a certain place. I mean, if, if a property owner is directed to screen a building with a wall, it can be up to eight feet as long as it's inside the setback, you know, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both. I agree with the discussion, although I don't think that particular issue is before us today necessarily, and so, but I appreciate you having brought it up, and I think it's something excellent for us to keep in mind as other projects come before us. But the item before us here is really kind of different in nature, and I'd suggest that...
But, Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up on that, I think it is relevant in, and I'm sure this is a coastal permit, I would guess. So if we have something not in, in compliance, it's going to impact the rest of the project. And we're not going to be able to get to that today. We're not going to have a measurement on the hedge or the height of the house, but I wish we did. And then I have two follow-up questions, and I'll turn my mic off.
Please.
This attached residential unit that was approved in April of last year, was that done ministerially? I think you can with attached, right? We never heard that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that's correct.
So there's two residences in that building now?
There's an attached, there's a main residence and an attached second residential unit.
Okay. This potential butterfly habitat, is that different than an, in fact, butterfly habitat?
Yes.
All right. So, so if it's potential, then you simply need to see, A, are there any butterflies here, and if there were, would it be impacted? As opposed to, I per se, presumption of, of non-invasion by...
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, yes, I think generally the statement you made is correct. What we require of a particular property, there has a butterfly designation on it, or an environmentally sensitive habitat designation on it for some other reason, is for the project developer to have some biological work done. In this case, we did receive a report from Dan Mead in November indicating that, in fact, this site didn't have butterfly habitat present. When we designate habitat in our local coastal plan, it's pretty broad brush. We haven't done site-specific surveys for every type of resource, and so the intent is to fine-tune that as projects come in. So it's not an uncommon way of evaluating habitat.
But some habitats, some designated habitats have no butterflies, haven't had them in a long time, but that's still, that's a different designation than potential, I understand.
Yes. Well, Mr. Chair, if you look at the summary under issue summary on page, the top of page three, it indicates that a site visit was conducted by Dan Mead, who's a specialist in butterfly habitat, and he determined there was no habitat present, not just butterflies, but no habitat present, which is much more definitive than just the absence of butterflies. He's essentially saying, there's nothing on this site that would attract butterflies.
So it's potential because...
It's in the area.
They're in the area.
Right.
So everything on channel is potentially butterfly.
I can't assure that without looking at a map.
Something like that. Okay, thanks.
Sure. And then, Mr. Chair, as to the potential for a violation, we do look at the permit history of, of projects, and we ensure before we issue permits that, in fact, there is no violation. I don't know, as I indicated to you, I haven't reviewed or researched this project personally, but we'll make sure that, that there are no violations before we issue the permit, assuming your commission approves it today.
And that would include the hedge height would be, could be looked at?
Yes, if it's, if it was a permit condition, we'll look at that. I did want to clarify, this isn't just a coastal permit issue. Whenever we issue a land use permit or a coastal development permit in the county, we have to find that a project, project is in conformance with the zoning code. So that's our, our method of ensuring that properties are up to code is when they seek an additional permit, we review all of the structures and uses on the property and ensure that they're in compliance with our codes.
Mr. Chair, just quickly to follow, Ms. Black, should the, should MBAR have determined that 10 feet was the appropriate hedge height, and it's now at eight, are you going to hold up this permit? Until it grows two feet?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, it depends on whether or not it was attached as a condition of the permit.
Well, we sent it back, we, we were all deferring to MBAR, and we don't want to second-guess anyone, and they were the best to determine this, and we talked about it for a long time.
I understand. The commission does need to be aware that there's a difference between requiring plants be installed and requiring that they grow to a certain height. Now, if people are planning to a different height than was expected, there's some control issue there, but just because somebody plants a tree and says, I think it's going to be 20 feet high, well, if it's not 20 feet high, the next permit they seek, we're not going to hold up their permit. So it is, it is a touchy issue, and I think it is an important issue to review as you look at aesthetic issues.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Commissioner Overall?
On this same subject, Mr. Gage, when you made the presentation, there were some comments by the MBAR related to the bamboo and all that. Could you tell us what the status is of their review of that and what the plans look like? I either don't have them or am not, can't find them right at the moment, so...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, my understanding of that comment is that it refers to screening and landscaping in front of the, the block wall that you see in the front elevation of the structure. The agent for the applicant is present and may be able to address that in greater detail.
Does the applicant wish to address us on this item? Would you state your name and your relationship for the record?
I just met with Sam Mafus, who made the comment from MBAR regarding that comment. And on the west wall, we have bamboo running along the distance of it. And what his comment referred to was not to continue the bamboo to, the area toward Channel Drive, was to provide a different type of screening, possibly carry the bougainvillea around the corner and behind the building to screen that wall and a view from the street.
Commissioner Overall, did that answer your question?
Do we then not have a current landscape plan? Is that correct?
No, the project at that time was, continued to, concept final at that time, we'll be submitting drawings for that.
So, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, what occurs when there's a planning commission review required on projects is they go to the MBAR for conceptual review, and they get to the point where the MBAR is ready to move them to preliminary, and then they come to you.
And then come to us, right.
So that you can provide comments, if you'd like, to the MBAR in any issues.
Thank you for that observation. Commissioners, other questions of staff? Or the applicant on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the, the public hearing on this item. Unless staff has any additional comments, I'll put it to the commissioners for deliberation and a motion. Commissioner Gottsinger?
Well, I, I find this project to be, you know, unfortunate. You know, I know at the time that the House was up for approval, there was lots and lots of discussion. I was not sitting on this commission at the time, you know, but, and I find it really unfortunate.
unfortunate that this particular lot continues to be developed, let's put it that way. I think that the House and the second residential attached unit, you know, was probably enough, you know, and now, so, and, that said, it's just unfortunate. That's my personal feeling, that the continued, but we do have rules and regulations, and it does appear that this project, and it's here in for a coastal development permit, complies with the regulations that we have in place right now. You know, and do I want to see a building on that corner? No, I don't want to see another building on that corner, but they have every right to build that building where it is, you know, and it does comply, and it is, it is short, and it's, you know, if we're to trust the photographs, and we're not going to see much more than a roof right on that corner. But I just continue, this coastal, this Channel Drive is just like so, you know, special to the community, as is Butterfly Beach, and, you know, I just hate to see like a Manhattan Beach, or Badondo Beach, or even Ventura Strand, where everything is built right up to the edge of everything, you know, and it's no longer a beach community, but an urban community right on the ocean. And I can find no reason that I wouldn't approve the coastal development permit.
Commissioner Burrows.
Well, I agree with everything Commissioner Gottsberger said. As you walk or drive along Channel Drive, it does seem to be becoming more and more impacted, and I do have a question. When was this particular house approved? I didn't find it in here. Two thousand four? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Overall.
Yes, just two comments that I would direct at the MBAR, assuming that we ultimately approve this. I'd have to question the setting, the sighting, rather, of these structures. Could they move, be moved further to the interior of the property and not quite so close to the edge? And then the other is just to, you know, really encourage a rigorous review of the landscape plan, because clearly this is not, what you all expected from that as mitigation a couple of years ago is not turning out to do quite what you anticipated, so be really focused on that when they're reviewed.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned earlier, I reviewed the 2004 tape when we approved this home, and I want to compliment former Commissioner Tilcher for getting this exactly right, and I apologize for the community for not getting it right. That house is far too close, and it is definitely blocking the view of those mountains. I don't know what I was thinking, and I relied on this hedge issue, I guess, which didn't seem to work. Saying that, I want to mention how great it is to agree with Commissioner Gottsberger. I don't always get to do that, but...
Maybe today will be a great day.
It might be. It's a present and sitting day. I think at this point, everything else looks right. I don't know why a generator needs to be on all day, and I hope that isn't as noisy as I fear it is, because that is a special area. There's a lot of people using that. It's right across from the steps that everyone has access to the beach, and I hope that isn't going to be very loud, and...
65 dB is quite...
Is it quiet?
Quite quiet.
And the hedge, it isn't that one, they were to plant a hedge, it was to be not cut down, so that new direction needs to be given to get that to the point that MBAR agreed that it would be maintained at, whatever that is, and so I suppose I'll be supporting the project as well.
I have no comments to add that haven't already been stated, so does somebody want to make a motion on this item? Did we have, was that a motion to move?
I did not, I did not make a motion.
I have not heard a motion on this item.
I mean, I'd be happy to make a motion if that's what's needed at this point.
I think it is.
I move that we adopt the required findings, accept the exemption, and approve the project subject to the conditions.
Some would...
And maybe Mr. Overall would like to reiterate the conditions that he would like to make to MBAR. I mean, I just wasn't totally clear about those, so maybe you can verbalize those, and I'd be happy to have those attached to the motion.
That MBAR take a second look at the sighting of the plan development, and they conduct a rigorous review of the landscape plan.
And Commissioner Gottsberger, those are acceptable to you?
Yes, those are acceptable.
Yes, those are acceptable to me.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any. We have a motion and second with the comments. No?
I don't think I've...
I'll second.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Now we have a motion and second with Commissioner Overall's comments back to the MBAR. All in favor of the motion say aye, oppose, no. Aye passes unanimously. So that moves us on to item number three on our standard agenda. Do we need any time before we take this item off? We'll take a five-minute break and then come back. Call us back into session here. So we're now ready for item number three, which is the Peterson Appeal of the Land Use Permit Approval of La Guerra New Residence Guest House Engrating at 2480 Bella Vista Drive. Mr. Moore, you want to read this item into the record?
Mr. Chair, the following is the hearing on the request of Dave and Kay Peterson to consider the appeals, case numbers 07APL31 and 07APL35, appeals filed October 4th, 2007, and October 18th, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303A of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Ms. Mayshor, we're ready for your presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Nicole Mayshor, Planner with Development Review South. Today I will be giving a presentation on the Peterson Appeal of La Guerra Land Use Permit and MBAR Approval. The project before you today is located at 2480 Bella Vista Drive in the Montecito area. The parcel is an 8.41 acre parcel, Zone Resource Management, located within Montecito Hillside District and rural hillside ridgeline area. The area proposed for development is approximated as shown here. The proposed project is for construction of a 3,985 square foot residence with 1,854 square foot basement and 620 square foot attached garage, 800 square foot guest house, 2,445 cubic yards of cut, 1,182 cubic yards of fill, retaining walls of no greater than four feet in height and 440 feet long, and a pool. Here we see the proposed north and south elevations, the proposed east and west elevations. The proposed project is located on the same site as a previous application, case number 06LUP349, which was denied by your commission January 17th, 2007. The current land use permit and MBAR applications were filed May 16th and 17th, 2007, approved by the MBAR September 24th, 2007, approved by Planning Development October 8th, 2007, and appealed October 4th and 18th, 2007. The MBAR reviewed the project on four occasions, June 18th, July 2nd, July 30th, and September 24th. Design issues addressed during MBAR review included square footage, mass, site location, and color. Following project revisions to address MBAR design concerns, the MBAR granted preliminary approval on September 24th, with comments to: re-study the northwest arbor, provide a lighting plan, and use non-reflective roof materials. Appeal issues include visual resources, site design, and alteration of topography. With regard to visual resources, visual resources policy two requires structures be compatible with the environment, subordinate to landforms, follow natural contours, and avoid intrusion into the skyline. Additionally, Montecito Community Plan Visual Resource Policies 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3 require that development be subordinate to open space, grading be limited, and that impacts to open space views be minimized. Aspects of the project providing consistency with these requirements include the single-story design, consistency with height requirements, materials that blend with the surrounding terrain, and landscape screening. With regard to site design, Montecito Land Use and Development Code MBAR Finding Number Six requires that site layout be in a well-designed relationship to environmental qualities, open spaces, and topography of the site. Additionally, the Montecito Architectural Guidelines require that site design protect special features such as landforms, rockout croppings, mature trees, unique vegetation groupings, hilltops, and ridgelines. Aspects of the project providing consistency with these requirements include retention of existing on-site boulders, vegetation replacement in a ratio of three to one, retaining walls of less than four feet in height, residential square footage that is under the architectural guidelines recommended floor area, and review and approval by the Montecito Board of Architectural Review. This slide shows proposed vegetation screening and replacement, including large oaks and olives. Also shown are the proposed boulder retaining walls designed to retain rockout croppings as features of the site. With regard to alteration of topography, hillside and watershed protection policies require that grading be kept to a minimum, development fits site topography, soils, geology, and hydrology, natural features be preserved, and that plans requiring excessive grading may be denied. Additionally, the Montecito Architectural Guidelines require that grading include no more than 1,500 cubic yards of cut or fill, excluding grading not apparent from the exterior, such as grading for basements or pools. Aspects of the project providing consistency with these requirements include vegetation retained to the extent feasible, vegetation replacement in a ratio of three to one, retention of on-site boulders, less than 1,500 cubic yards of fill, and only 1,550 cubic yards of cut. In light of this analysis, staff recommends that your commission adopt the required findings for approval, accept the exemption pursuant to seek with Section 15303A, deny the MBAR appeal granting de novo approval of case number 07BAR129, and deny the LUP appeal granting de novo approval of 07LUP336, subject to condition. That will conclude staff's presentation.
That would be the time for the commissioners to declare site visits ex parte communications, and I know we've all had a lot of ex parte on this. I've received a lot of emails and phone calls on this item myself, and I believe everything I've received is in the record, but I am going to go back through it and make sure again. But maybe we'll start out with you, Commissioner Phillips. Do you have anything?
Nothing to report. I've seen the site at least three times now, I think, and I've driven the roads, and I have no ex parte communications to report, however.
Commissioner Burrows.
I've visited the site, spent quite a lot of time there, and did walk the footprint as presented to us. I heard from both the applicant and the appellate, and I received a number of emails, all of which I believe were copied to the staff.
Commissioner Overall.
I have visited the site. I intended to visit it again yesterday, but there was a intervening natural occurrence that deterred me from doing that. At the invitation of the Petersons, I visited their property, and I observed both the La Guerra site and the 2300 Bella Vista site, which is under reconstruction. While I recognize that this is a private view rather than a public view, it did offer a particularly good perspective to see the potential for serious erosion that has taken place at 2300 Bella Vista. I attended the Montecito Association Board meeting on December 11th, at which both the applicant and the appellate made presentations. Since you weren't all there, I guess I need to report what the sense was there. There was a definite impression that the land use committee position was concerned with the project, but they were also very concerned with the process, and in particular, I think they were concerned about MBARs being worn down by the length of the process. I know that, I believe Mr. Tedesco is here and probably will address that too, but that was definitely something that was said to the public. Additionally, there were some very forceful comments made by Commissioner Gottsberger that may have been subject to misinterpretation. She may have overstated the case related to the acceptability of the size and related to the lot. I've received communication from several people in the community, including three former commissioners, who suggested strongly that Commissioner Gottsberger should step down from hearing this because of those comments. The vote by the board was not unanimous. I believe the vote was 10 to 5, but I'm not absolutely positive of that. It appeared that the reasons for the votes not to support the appeal are unknown. There was very little discussion by the Montecito Association Board, other than by the comments made by the chair of their land use committee as to what the reasoning was by the people who voted, but it was not a unanimous vote. I've had conversations with three, as I indicated, three former commissioners, and discussed at some length. They all participated in the GPAC, and Mr. McGreban, who incidentally wanted to be here today but who was on jury duty, gave a lengthy discussion as to what the intent was of the square footage guidelines that are contained in the architectural guidelines, indicating that unlike a lot of the things that were done lower down, those were more projections of what might be possible, but he indicated very clearly that, in his view and having worked on it, that everything was site-specific and should be judged accordingly. And I think that ends my disclosures.
I think that's the longest disclosure I've ever heard. Commissioner Gottsberger.
Yeah, well, okay, so I'm going to leave the comments that I made at the Montecito Association to the end of my disclosures. I have visited the site four times. I saw the story polls the first time they were put up, and I saw the story polls the second time that they were put up. Interestingly enough, I have received no emails or had no conversations with prior planning commissioners about my views. So I find it a little awkward that a fellow commissioner and other commissioners have been in communication with former planning commissions, and that's not an open discussion, when I'm being held to account for comments that I may have made. Now, my, the comments that I made to the Montecito Association Board were directed at the process, you know, they were not directed at this particular project. They were, you know, and there were some numbers and facts that were presented to the board that I felt were incorrect, and I, so I did, in my comments, try to correct those, you know, and that was, those were the comments that I made, and I understand that a number of people have interpreted those comments in, as is the human condition, to kind of interpret... the human condition, to kind of interpret what we hear in our, to fit our own kind of small little box, okay? So I also understand, having had a call from County Council, Mr. Allen, which I spoke with, I believe it was Monday, David, we spoke at length as to whether I may, there may be questions of having a conflict of interest on this project. So I want to actually make a public declaration around that conversation. Yes, I had worked for Mr. Wayne Siemens in 2000 on another project, for which I received a check of $894, you know, and this was his Park Lane project that this board heard, I believe, in August, and as you remember, I did step down on that project. Even though, according to Mr. Allen, the length of time in which we receive money for, to determine a conflict of interest is a year. You know, you might notice that the plans that I did were done in 2000. It was seven years ago that I worked for Mr. Siemens. I would think that probably everybody on this commission has had conversations or worked in this community with someone in the last seven years, you know. And that's why I believe we have very specific standards of what is a conflict of interest. And I think between Mr. Allen and I, we determined that I did not have a conflict of interest on this project, you know. And then the last thing to be said here is, I know a number of people who are going to speak today are from the former GPAC, in which I served. I know that there's probably going, there's public speakers who are going to address what the community plan says and what the architectural guidelines to say. I think I should say, at this point, that I was there, you know. And am I personally committed that the hillsides be protected? I want everybody in this room to know that I am. I have spent the last, I don't know, since 1985, which looks like 20 years, specifically, specifically, my, all my actions have been to protect the hillsides. I've worked very, very hard to protect the hillsides, you know, and to come up with regulations that protect our hillsides. Do I think that as a community, we've done a great job? No, I do not. Do I think that the RES 40, the RES 360, the whole resource management zone needs to be strengthened? Yes, I do. And I've taken those actions. That's one of the reasons, as we heard Ms. Black say earlier today, we have coming before us a change of how we look at them, to do to a development permit. I was very vocal about that when those discussions came up, that I agreed with that action, you know. So, and I have to look at this project inside the laws, the rules, and the regulations we have on the books today. That's the way I believe that this commission should be looking at all. Not what we want to see in the future, but what an applicant has in black and white, what staff has in black and white today on this project. Not what we want to see for the future. If we want to see changes, then we should make those changes. And I'm certainly available if there's any questions from staff, County Council, or Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Commissioner Gottstanker, for those comments. I thought it was important, because I know there was a lot of interest in this, issues of conflict. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chair, if I may, simply for the benefit of the public, because there is sometimes some public confusion on the issues. When an attorney speaks of conflict of interest, we are generally speaking of the state law, which refers to financial conflict of interest. With respect to financial conflict of interest, the law looks to, you know, what income, remuneration, financial relationships a decision-maker may have with, you know, a party. That's one issue. The other issue that has been touched on in disclosures today is what is more properly referred to as bias. An applicant is entitled to due process, and that means a decision-maker who comes to the commission and believes and can, in fact, when looked at objectively, act in an unbiased manner based on the facts and evidence and rules that they must apply. So those are the two issues that, you know, have here been alluded to.
Yeah, I want to follow up, because also should declare, I've made two visits to the site. I would have liked to have gone up there myself again yesterday, but weather conditions weren't too appropriate. I'd like to address commissioners. I also received a lot of communications regarding conflicts of interest on this item. And I would point out that all of us, this is a small community, we all know people in this community. That's why we're here. If we didn't, we wouldn't be very good at the jobs we have in front of us. And in particular, as relates to Commissioner Gottstanker, if there's anybody on this planning commissioner that I've worked with that I felt was more open to being, to changing their mind based on testimony that they received on the day of a hearing, it would be Commissioner Gottstanker, who has a number of times modified her position based on the testimony received on the day of, and I have complimented her on that many times, at being open. And I know we will all do a great job of taking the testimony that's before us today and rendering the best decision we possibly can for the community. We all volunteer our time, and we're here for one purpose, to make this the best community it can be. With that said, we are ready unless...
May I?
Please.
Thank you. With all that has been said, it's certainly important for all of us not to prejudge any issue, flag how we may vote, try to persuade in advance. And I'm sure Commissioner Gottstanker didn't do that, and nor should we. And I think it's important for the public to recognize that it doesn't matter that this was before the Montecito Association. As a significant representative of homeowners, they play an important part, but they don't have a legal function in this proceeding. And it's important that we all remember that. I think the public remembers that. Land use's testimony will be advisory. It's not required that the applicant be there. The comments Commissioner Gottstanker could have made, could have been in someone's living room. It wouldn't have made any difference. And I, do you agree with that, Mr. Chair? I think that's correct.
I do. I do think, you know, the only issue is whether somebody has made up their mind. And as I pointed out, Commissioner Gottstanker is excellent at taking the testimony and crafting her comments and her motions and decisions based on the testimony. And I have every confidence she will do that again today. And I want her here on top of that, because she brings a depth of knowledge to the proceedings. So, but I think that's enough philosophy on why we're up here. And maybe we should move on to the applicant's presentation, excuse me, the appellant's presentation on this item. Mr. Peterson, how much time do you think you'll want for, just to give us a rough idea?
I would say at this point, probably about 10 or 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Chair and fellow commissioners, I'd first like to address the subject that we just have been talking about, and that is, is that I know that at least one vote was changed because of Commissioner Gottstanker's comments. I don't know of any others. I also know that she has been a leader in the community as far as protecting the mountains and has been very instrumental in all the legislations and ordinances and so forth that have been passed. My concern was that this matter is very important to the applicants, it's very important to us, but most importantly, it's most important to the community, and that it's also very important to not only have a lack of bias, but also the appearance of a lack of bias. And I accept what has been said here. I believe that you all will look at this with an open mind, and thank you in advance for your consideration. First of all, I would like to have my wife Kay present a brief PowerPoint presentation. We had a land planner put it together, and the last moment, late last night, we found out that he was going to be unable to be here. Can everybody hear me? I'm sorry.
I believe we can.
The last minute, we found out late last night that he was not going to be able to be here, and so I apologize in advance if it's not quite as professional as we'd like it to be.
Thank you. Kay?
Just for the record, your Kay Peterson, correct?
Yes, Kay Peterson, and I have to say, it's not just a lack of professionalism, this is my first PowerPoint presentation, so bear with me. The subject parcel that we're here for today was rezoned from three-acre exclusive residential, exclusively residential, one acre, to the resource management zone as part of the 1992 Montecito Community Plan update, consisted with a mountainous area land use designation. The plan re-designated the parcel from urban to rural, which we think is the most, maybe perhaps one of the most important points we have to make here today. I believe that there, at least for myself and just from the conversations we've had in the community, I don't think people really understand this distinction. In Montecito, the only area designated rural is that located above Bella Vista Drive and the adjacent areas to the west. The urban-rural boundary is very rarely amended, and in fact, as I understand, only twice in the history of Santa Barbara County has it been amended, and this was the second time, this one in 1992. This is a map that shows the, oh yeah, I'm right. Okay, this boundary up here was the urban-rural boundary until the community adapted this plan. And they changed the boundary after, as I understand it, over 100 public meetings in six years to include, they dropped it, they moved it south to Bella Vista. This is Park Lane, Bella Vista, right along here. So this area in here changed from an urban designation to a rural designation. And here you can see it again, here it is in color. This was the line. This is now the urban, this is the boundary between urban and rural. This whole area is now rural, which comes under different guidelines and rules. And I think that's more of the same. An area shown on the land use map within which development is limited, excuse me, rural area, this is how it's defined by the land use plan. It's an area shown on the land use map within which development is limited to agriculture and related uses, mineral extraction, and related uses and activities, recreation, public or private, and finally, low-density residential and related uses, and then uses of a public and quasi-public nature. The purpose of this designation is to delineate land having an average slope in excess of 40% and isolated table land surrounded by slopes exceeding 40%. That's the mountainous area. This land shall be kept free of intensive development to reserve it for such uses as watershed, scenic enjoyment, wildlife habitat, grazing, orchards, and vineyards. The RMZ district is a rural area zone district. The RMZ district is the most restrictive of all zone districts in the county. Development located in the RMZ shall be held to a much stricter standard than that located in residential zones, which is south of Bella Vista. We're talking north of Bella Vista now. The RMZ district adds heightened regulations and strict limitations to the ridgeline-hillside guidelines, including the architectural guidelines. The purpose and intent of the RMZ district is to protect lands unsuited for intensive development. The intent is to allow reasonable but limited development and encourage the preservation of the mountainous area for uses including grazing, educational, and scientific study, and limited residential development. The RMZ district is not a residential zone. The project's site is located in the rural area within the mountainous area designations and zoned resource management. Existing site development consists, right now, of a 1,200-foot-long driveway. The driveway construction required approximately 16,000 cubic yards of combined grading and over a half an acre of vegetation removal. You've all seen this. That's the driveway. This is the proposed project, as you're viewing it today. 3,985 square feet for the main residence, 620 square feet for the attached garage, 800 square feet for the guest house, 1,854 suite for the basement, and 1,700 square feet of loja and pergola, for a total of 8,959 square feet of structure. 3,626 cubic yards combined grading, and 60,000 square feet of native vegetation removal. The inconsistencies are, the project is inconsistent with the purpose and the intent of the RMZ zone. The project is inconsistent with the intent of rural mountainous area designation. The project is inconsistent with numerous community plan and land use plan policies, which my husband will address. 8,959 square feet of development, 3,626 cubic yards of grading, and over 60,000 square feet of native vegetation yards of grading, and over 60,000 square feet of native vegetation removal cannot be considered limited residential development, particularly when combined with the existing driveway. The scale of the project does not protect nor preserve the rural character of the mountainous The project does not limit grading and land form alteration to the maximum extent feasible from the hillside watershed protection. The height, scale, and design of the project is incompatible with surrounding natural environment. The project does not preserve, enhance, or protect the visual and biological importance of Montecito hillsides and ridgelines. And in conclusion, the rural areas of Montecito are unique and afforded the highest level of protection through the RMZ district. Projects located within the RMZ should not be evaluated using urban guidelines, including the Montecito Architectural Guidelines for Hillside Development and the FARs. The findings for approval cannot be made given the numerous policy inconsistencies. To approve this project sets a dangerous precedent and threatens the integrity of the entire mountainous area of Montecito and the stated goals of the community plan.
So, what happened at the last meeting here on this project on November 15th, when you all heard this matter, you can, oh, you can turn that off if you'd like. Thank you. At that time, the total square footage of buildings proposed was 10,305 square feet. Now, that was off of, actually what I'm going to do here is... Oh, I'm sorry. So what I'm speaking to right now is the visual bulk, because I think we can all agree, I think we all are hopefully in agreement that this is a very unique zone and it should be free of intensive development. It's the mountain backdrop for the community is crucial and we want to have very minimum visual bulk. And so when I say that the visual bulk, I think, I submit that we should look at the project and subtract the basement out of it because really, outside of the cut and fill situation, the basement doesn't affect, in my opinion, the community as far as the visual bulk goes. So when you subtract that from, back on November 15th, from the 10,305 square feet that was submitted, and I've attached the, that sheet from the staff report on November 15th, we come up with 7,845 feet of visual bulk up on that hillside. Today, one year later, the total square footage of the building proposed is 7,259 feet plus 1,700 square feet of loja, trellis, and arbors, total 8,959. I say that we should consider that, or that should be considered, because really what we're talking about is what this backdrop is and how it's going to look to everybody in the, in the community. And when you subtract out the basement from today's project, you really end up with a difference of 740 square feet from when it was submitted on November 15th, when it was denied to today's date. In addition, that I think it's very important that we really take a look at this whole site here, and there's a second site at 2490 Bella Vista, right underneath it, and these applicants filed a notice of public hearing on January 8th, 2007, for conceptual review of a new residence, attached garage, pool, and guest house for a total of 8,379 square feet without a basement, with cut proposed at 4,606 cubic yards. The application was withdrawn before the hearing. Now that was a, going to be for conceptual review. And I say that's important because when this is all said and done, whatever is done here, when that project comes up, that development, they're going to be relying on, and it's even a larger parcel, it's about, I don't know, in excess of 20 acres. The argument's probably going to be that this very visual project up above, you approve some seven thou, some 7,800 feet of bulk, and so this is a larger parcel, even though it's a smaller pad, they should be able to get another 8,000 square home there, or whatever. So it makes everybody look kind of foolish, I think, if we don't really look and see what's really going on here. We spent some time at all these meetings over the last few years arguing about who actually owns this property and that, that there were more than one owner. And it was denied, and then it came forward that, well, yes, it's owned by more than one person. It wasn't just going to be developed for some homeowner, there's other people involved. And whatever we do with this project, or whatever you do with this project, it's going to for sure set some type of a precedent. And if we're talking about, we want this mountain backdrop to be important. It's a regional asset, it's a, it's a local asset. We need to protect it the very, very best we can. And what I'd like to show you is briefly are a couple of pictures up in the mountains of homes that I suggest, or we suggest, that we should be trying to replicate and the ones that we shouldn't be replicating. No, I don't think you can, can you? Okay, yeah. Maybe not that size. Is the light off? Maybe we could have these lights off for just a minute. It's very difficult to see. No, it doesn't, let's see. I say that what we don't want to do, we replicate this off the mouse. I'm sorry. We don't want to have more of this. This is a situation where it was recently built, it wasn't approved by you, but it was approved by both the MBAR and the staff, and there's really no landscaping, nor can you put any, because they've got an infinity pool right here and it would block out their view if you did so. So we have to look at that. Now, what I, what we say that we think we should try and replicate is, can you pass over a little bit to the right, let's see, keep going, is something that looks like this. It just blends into the hillside. And if you go to the other side, this one right here, just, it disappears. This was, this was built, I believe, in 2003. Four years later, you really can't screen it from the community because this area here is the infinity pool, and when you look up from all over, many, many sites in Montecito from public roads, what you see is this. It's not going to be landscaped out. I don't know what the plans were, but the point is that nobody really objected to that when it came through. It just went through planning and MBAR and the community, and we all relied on them to make sure that this, I say that this shouldn't have happened. And, but nevertheless, here it is and we all live with it. Now, I've got one more picture that I want to show too. This is immediately to the west of the subject property. This was also done after these guidelines were put in. Apparently, nobody objected to it. It never came, not before the commission. And thankfully, the people who just recently purchased it are repairing this hillside here, and I understand they can put over a million dollars in landscaping in, which should help, should definitely help. But on the other hand, this is about the same size. This is a build out of several thousand square feet, and this is what we're talking about.
Mr. Peterson, we do have a question for you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would you, overall?
I'm sorry, I was tuned out. Just very briefly, you, you talked about how much they were going to spend on the landscaping. Would you mind repeating that, because I missed it?
Yes, it's my understanding from talking to the owner that they were going to put in a million dollars worth of landscaping on this. They've already put the jute in and it's improved considerably. I don't know why that's so, maybe this is from the deal. But it's, it's already starting to take. But this was a scene of a slide three or four years ago. All that came down, plugged up a culvert, and washed out the street up there on Bella Vista. And then they built some walls here to try and retain it and so forth. And I'm showing this because this is, the last permit on this property, I think they said that the square footage was approximately 7,500 square feet, and that's very similar to what the proposal is over, on this present project. And, you know, the problem is, in preventing this, these types of things, is that if we have to rely on the neighbors, these are such large parcels that not that many people get, get notice of, of what's going to happen. And this is a long, drawn-out affair, you know, I can, I can appreciate staff situation, that people keep coming back and keep coming back, and after a while, it's like, let's get this thing off the plate here. And I think that part of it is what's happening with this project that we're talking about right now, today, and that is, is that everybody's getting kind of sick of it. We've been spending, we spent a couple of years at it. You all have been working at it as, for free. We've been doing it for free, and the staff gets paid, and the developer has a team that's getting paid, but it just kind of wears you out after a while. Wears you out. I think that staff should have, on this particular project that we're talking about today, that should have taken a position a long time ago that, look at, put this thing back on the saddle, or put it, put it back, tuck it back into the mountains, and that's it. That's what everybody's saying. Make it smaller. I think these, this mountain backdrop, if we're going to preserve it, the homes really have to be limited in size. They have to be smaller, and they have to be tucked in. Otherwise, we're going to see more of this. You can take that off.
Commissioner Burrows, did you have a question for Mr. Peterson?
I do.
Pardon me?
Mr. Peterson, where were these photographs taken from?
Um...
Up and down Ramaro Canyon, or exactly where?
Um, you know, I didn't take these photos, maybe, maybe Kay.
Kay, did you? From your house. Okay, thank you.
But here's the thing.
But they're just as visible from the street. They're actually a little worse from Bella Vista than they do from our house. Thank you.
They're highly, highly, highly visible. So, the crux of our appeal, and I'm going to stop in, in a couple of seconds here, because there's a number of people in the community, and really this is a community situation I'd like to turn over to have, to hear what they have to say, is that we object to the visual bulk, the site of the development. It was originally sited back, tucked into the mountains when the road was put in. There was nothing to object to at that time because it was going to be an 800-square-foot primary residence. The plans were prepared, it was submitted, the road went up to it. If, in fact, they would have said at that time that really what we're planning on doing is building out on the, a way out on the point, I think there would have been lots of conversations about it. Maybe that driveway would have been 16 feet wide, maybe it would have been 12, 13, or 14 feet. It could have been, we really would have had a chance to do something on it rather than getting permitted, putting that scarred, putting that road up there. Entitled to a road, but maybe it would have been placed a little bit differently if they would have said that they're going to build this huge residence up there, or try and build this residence up there, rather than saying that they're going to build a small one, and then once the road gets in, come back and say, well, no, really, we want to build out on the point. So I see this, the site is bad, should be pushed back, and the vegetation removal is huge. And I think those points will be spoken to by Victoria Green and others, and at the very end, I think I would like to just say a couple of things if I could, maybe another two or three minutes at the end of the presentation, if that's okay.
If you would.
My wife too.
We have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peterson, thank you for your testimony. Is it, is it your view that some visual impact would be appropriate? For instance, you cite two examples of what you say is appropriate design, and indeed there is still visual impact.
Yes, for sure, for sure, because we are going to see the house, but the, the houses, but perhaps they should be just as transparent as possible and have, have it not be about the houses. I mean, when you look up at the hillside and have it not be about the houses, some big, beautiful design, but have it be about how they just kind of fit in, and you really have to do that by, by limiting the size of it. This is a rural area. This isn't, I suggest that this house would be great on the other side of Bella Vista, any place on, practically any place on Bella Vista, but to say this house belongs up there when they have to build out, almost at the very, very edge of the property, there's a setback of, I think, about 16 feet, and on two of the sides, it's, it's probably right within the 16, you know, very, maybe 16, 17 feet, and in front, I think they're about maybe 25 feet. And they wouldn't even be able to build that large if they weren't able to take this, the saddle down, something like, I think it's going to be about 10 feet that they can take the, not the saddle, but the, the knoll. And let me just say one other thing. What was, what's been, what was driving this for quite a while was the fire turnaround. And when they first started, when we first got involved in this, the reason the house had to be out on the, way out on the knoll was because of the hammerhead. And that, we talked about that for two or three meetings, then at one point, we went and talked to the fire chief, and he said, well, no, we didn't say it had to be there, it could be any place on the site. So then when we started talking about that, then it said, well, then the argument was that if we put the, the hammerhead to the south of the house, then everyone's going to be looking at cars on that hammerhead. People up in the trailer are going to be looking down and looking at cars and would much rather not see the cars there. We talked to the fire chief about it, he said, well, there's no parking on the hammerhead with cars. That's not allowed. The very purpose of the hammerhead is that in case there's a fire, they can come up and turn around, very, you know, and so forth. So then, the next thing was that, well, we can't build on the saddle because of the GL. So then, the next thing was that, well, we can't build on the saddle because of the geological, because there's shale there. But on the plans themselves, the geological plans themselves show that there's shale and sandstone that run...
David's on the floor.
I got it, I got it. That run all the way through, there's sandstone that runs through here, and there's shale and sandstone, shale, sandstone, it runs all the way through. And as it turns out, they're not completely building on the, within the geological envelope. As a matter of fact, this pool overhangs it, and this part of the property here overhangs the geological footprint, and that's also shown on the plans. So it's my understanding that really, in sites like this, if you do build on the shale, you just have to, you have to use caissons, you have to go down further. It's more expensive. On the other hand, this entire lot here, and this isn't really relevant, but in a way it is, was cost less than $200,000. $180,000. And so you put some money into it, even if this house is sit right back here, you've got magnificent views, and financially, nobody's going to get hurt. This is a spectacular site. So we've got, I would like to...
Mr. Peterson, let me follow up a bit.
Sure, please.
The mass bulk scale of the residence is certainly a factor we have to look at. But from residence on, from Bella Vista...
Right.
It's the elevation you're interested in, really. You don't see the back of the house. You see the elevation, and that's, we'll call it, the front.
This part right here?
Yeah, the elevation. So is, would it, would it be better for you if it was lower? And how, and I'm not sure how, I guess back solves your problem. Is that...
Well, back solves a problem, but we're already speaking about it for ourselves so much, because really, it's my understanding that it's been said that we're going to be kind of landscaped out. No, I don't know if that's true or not, because those trees that they have up there are probably, I don't know, 25, I'm not, I'm not a landscape architect, but I think the size of those oaks, and 25, 30-year-old trees that they've, that they're showing on the model, and that's all sandstone in there, and I don't know how well those oaks are going to do, or, you know, they have to dig a hole and put them down, and I don't know how well they're going to do with being planted in sandstone. So you just don't know what it's going to look like five years from, 10 years from now. But the thing is, is that some of the other properties around there that were built quite a while ago, the vegetation is still struggling, and I see no, no large oaks up on, you know, these areas like this.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say, can I say? It's a hundred...
Would you use the microphone?
The, the, the house, the house itself is, I believe, 100 and, 101 feet from, in length. And the guest house is 49. So, so the bulk from this point to the front of the house, excluding this, the bulk is 150 feet, which is about a third of a block. And we're to the south of this, so really, we don't see that, we just see the very, you know, the width of the house, not the length of the house. The length of the house is what is going to be so visible to the rest of the community. A third of a block sitting on where they cut off this mountaintop. I think that's a, I think that's an enormous structure on this particular pad.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, if I may speak a little bit later at the end of the...
You do get that opportunity. Now that we've heard the appellant's presentation, now would be the time for the applicant to And maybe you can give us an idea of how long and who's going to be addressing this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see you have a big team here, I see.
My name is Harwood White, and I am the agent for Robert Largura, and I expect us to take about 25 minutes.
And who else is going to address this, if you would, Mr. White?
I will. Bob and, Bob Easton and Sam Mafus will address you, as well as Peter Candy, our attorney.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank staff...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. White, when you said that your presentation was going to be approximately 25 minutes, was that for the entire team, or was that yours?
The entire team.
Okay, great, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Unless there are, depending on questions, of course. Okay, thank you, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for working with us since this commission reviewed this project almost a year ago. It's not been an easy road, and staff has put in long hours to counsel us and to help us come to today with the, with a project that's been approved by them and by, of course, MBAR. Our presentation will be in three parts. I will provide an overview, and Bob and Sam will discuss the design and the landscape. Are you ready there, Mark? Okay. And Peter will discuss the policy issues that have been raised by the appellate letter. Okay, the first slide, please. Last January, your commission denied a larger proposal for this site. After several discussions amongst ourselves and with staff, the Largura team decided to start completely over. We listened to your concerns, and we listened to staff's critique. Staff laid out their policy priorities, and we began to explore ways to craft a project which would be consistent with Montecito's land use policies. At the top of the list was visual impact. They emphasized a re-study of the apparent massing, as well as to reexamine the fire department turnaround, and to take a hard look at the retaining walls. Finally, we made enough revisions and reductions to meet staff's guidelines. We then proceeded to MBAR. At two meetings, MBAR added a list of aesthetic concerns and requested yet further reductions in scale. They also visited the site again and took a fresh look at the neighborhood for compatibility purposes. The design team responded with, yet again, more reductions, more landscaping, and a palette of muted colors and materials. The result was a project which is smaller, lower, greener, and sits more gently on the land. Okay, Mark. To start with, we reconfigured the fire department turnaround further northward. You can again see, here was the plan that you looked at about, almost a year ago, and we were able to both turn it and move it northward in this position. Second, the house is now proposed to be 3,985 square feet. This compares to the 5148, which your commission denied last January. We dug the house down two feet on the site. We eliminated the second story. We eliminated a garage bay, and we eliminated the southmost bedroom. Okay, Mark. The end result... Just the next slide, please. The end result is a house which is, has been moved 21 feet northward. This is the footprint of the old house here, and this here, this is a, this is a vine-covered pergola, as well as here. This is the outline of the, the house as, as has been approved by staff. And secondly, and Mark, you can move on to the next one. That's right. The house is now sculpted into the existing topography. Again, here is the house as it was proposed a year ago, and as you can see, it's been moved backward. This is, we're looking, excuse me, back up. We are looking from east to west, and we are seeing the east elevation of the house. So basically, from the Bella, from the Romero side of the house. So the house is now one story, and it is dug down deeper into the hillside. Okay, the next one, Mark. Again, just, I'm going to walk, take you around the house. Here's the south elevation, again, looking northward, and the house is, as has been approved by staff and MBAR. And here is the outline, and you can see also, for example, the large retaining wall that had been proposed before, that now is replaced with a, with a, with an unretained slope. Okay, Mark. Again, the west elevation, same thing, you just see how much smaller, and this shows, again, the, how far back the house has been retreated. Now, back to the, to the full site plan, please. In addition, the guest house has been pushed back into the hillside an additional 13 feet, and the plate height reduced three and a half feet. We eliminated 135 feet of retaining wall. We reduced the height of the retaining walls to a maximum of four feet. Plantings in an already beefy landscape plan were upsized still further. Sam will be reviewing some of those with you. Numerous green elements were integrated, including grading, which follows the natural contours, the vine-colored, vine-covered pergolas, deep inset windows, flat roof elements which would accommodate solar energy resources. At the heart of the resource management zone is the goal of limited development. The zone disallows many accessory structures, such as detached garage, artist's studio, workshop, and pool cabana, which are allowed on the other side of Bella Vista Drive. All we're allowed is a house, a guest house, and a pool. And that is what we propose, no more. Montecito's architectural guidelines also call for limits to floor area throughout the community. The guidelines set stronger restrictions for the hillside district, which coincides with the RMZ zone here. The guidelines call for a house no greater than 6,632 square feet for this parcel. At 3,985 square feet, our proposal is 40% smaller than what the guidelines allow. Further, the guidelines, and you could go to the next slide there, please, Mark. The guidelines limit building height to 19 feet above grade. The house which your commission reviewed last January met that criterion, and that's, that's what you see here. This house would sit substantially below that limit. Clearly, this project meets the spirit and the letter of limited use for this site. Finally, the concept of neighborhood compatibility is essential in decisions about new development. Is the proposal in scale and in harmony with its neighbors? The Largura residence is an appropriate addition to the neighborhood and would be visually The appellant's raised concern about, about its visibility. You can go to the next slide there, Mark. Romero Trail being one of the, of the public locations from which the site can be seen. And we see, this is the site down here. Likewise, let's see, we have the next slide there, Mark. This is, we did a photo simulation of what this will look like after the landscape fills out, and with this house with earth tones would be developed there. Next slide, please. Okay, next slide. Likewise, this, the house would not be a, you see here the, the site, and you can see the story poles up here. Clearly, the, the road, this was taken at the end of the summer, when the road construction was, was just, the landscaping was going in. The house itself would not be a harmful intrusion into the public view. Okay, move the next slide. We'll move on, next one. From Bella Vista Drive on the west side, you see the story poles here, and they're more, that's a close-up, right? Again, it would not be an intrusion into the neighborhood. Bob will give you a closer look at the site design. You have the model to look at there, and Sam will provide a summary of the upgraded landscaping. If you have any questions now, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioner Phillips, if you would, hold on a second. I think we have a question for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. White, did the design team believe that the first design that you showed us fit the site?
I would have to ask them, but...
Were you involved with the design?
I was involved with them, and I thought it was, I thought it was a reasonable adaptation to the site.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any other questions at this time.
Bobby Easton, the architect, and I would like to make some comments over there by the model. So if I had a remote mic, probably would be good. Is this...
I think we can hear you.
So I want to ask, answer Commissioner Phillips's question, maybe, did, did we like our original submittal? And I think we did, and we did think it was appropriate, because we were well under the guidelines at that time. I think what really happened to us here is that we started this project assuming that we would be working with the architectural guidelines for the Montecito hillside area designated in the, in the architectural guidelines. And during the course of our process of designing, the awareness of, say, maybe the sensitivity of these hills, and the fact that the Res 40 should be regarded differently, has come to the fore during our whole process. There's not been, there is nothing in the architectural guidelines, for instance, or in any thing in the ordinances that I saw in regard to the Res 40 at the start of this project, that said that there will be more severe architectural restrictions in regard to visibility, mass bulk and scale, grading and drainage in the Res 40 district. Yes, there are ordinance in, within the comprehensive plan, the community plan, and they say that there should be limited development, and there shouldn't be a lot of grading, and there should be preservation of vegetation, and limited visibility of projects, usually to the maximum extent feasible. And we were, when we started this project and looked at this site in its entirety, it was obvious that this area here would be the place where we would build the house, because it was the most level area on the property. And traditionally, County of Santa Barbara has asked and has insisted that on a hillside site, the most level area should be the site where development takes place. In order to achieve the accessibility of that site, we had to propose the design for a road. In order to achieve the accessibility of that site, we had to propose the design for a road. In order to build the road, we had to have a structure associated with that road. I have done this before. Other architects have done this before. There was no secret, as has been implied by the appellant, that we were trying to fool somebody by coming in with an 800-square-foot building designated as a residence. It was always meant to be a guest house only. And it was clear to the planner or the team, I believe, they're, both of them are no longer on staff. Brian Baca was the geologist and a lady named Breyza was the planner, I believe, initially. Neither of them there or here on staff. But they understood what we were doing here, which was to be able to get up to the top of the site with a road and be able to analyze what we then wanted to go ahead and do. So we weren't trying to pull a fast one here. And by the way, yes, there is another site that the road accesses. And the road, the driveway is wider to that site because that's a requirement of the county. And after that turnoff to that site, the road does go to 14 feet in width. And yes, there would be possibly a future house on that site. And we certainly, if I'm involved in the design of that, we are certainly going to take into account what we have learned going through this process. And that house is a different kind of a site. It's not on a knoll like this. And it doesn't have a band of shale running through the site. The conditions are different. It'll be a different type of house. It'll be the type of house that'll be able to be blended more into the landscape. I've already done some preliminary thinking on that. So this house is not setting a precedent for another house as part of this property. What we have done during this whole process is to, by means of the design of the house, the size of the house, and the sighting of the house, respond to what the main complaints were about this house, both from neighbors, the M B A R, and the planning commission. And that is possibly the visibility of the house. And we've tried to modify that visibility by reducing the square footage and eliminating some rooms, moving the house considerably back on the site, as far back as we could and still preserving the hammerhead and drive and parking area here at the north part of the site, avoid the shale area between the house and the guest house. And to set the house lower on the site and to only have a four-foot retaining wall around the site. And we accomplished these design modifications by working with the staff and working with the senior planners in the planning department, working with the M B A R, working with the fire department. In other words, getting an accommodation by Jim Langhorn, who is the fire chief in charge of fire protection in the county, to modify the grades in regard to doing our hammerhead. I visited the Petersons' house. I sat on their couch in their family room. And Mr. Peterson said that he was concerned about looking up and seeing the roofline of our house while he was laying on the couch. In other words, we did, I think, just about everything to try to come to some kind of accommodation of everybody's concerns. Now, I understand from going to the planning commission meeting, I mean, the Montecito Association meeting last week, that Mr. Tedesco, who's chairman of the Land Use Committee, part of the Montecito Association, that they don't mind the architecture of the house. They mind where the house is sighted. And they are concerned about a precedent-setting design that is going to affect the future of development in these hillsides. And I am certainly aware of this. I have worked for years here in Montecito. I've lived here for 40 years. I've designed a number of houses up in these hillsides. I developed some design methodologies in, in cooperation with Bob Klosner, who used to be the head of the Montecito Association in terms of how to be able to build in these hillsides. And I think this is an issue that the Montecito Association has to look at carefully. It's an issue that you folks need to look at and everybody needs to look at. And that is how are, how is development in these hillsides really designed and reconciled? And we went through the process. We talked, as I said, to everybody who had a concern. And we have tried to develop a design that is a negotiated compromise between the desires of the private property owner who has the right to build in the hillside and the rights of the community. Well, I don't know if they're rights or not, but they're assumed rights of the community, for community rights. And the future of development in the hillsides is going to be an accommodation and a reconciliation between those two dynamics. And the way the dynamic is resolved is what we did. I think we did it in exemplary kind of reconciliation, kind of negotiation, to achieve this design. And we were able to get an approval from the planning department and approval from the M B A R. And I think, I think this is an example of what you'll see in the future, what's necessary to happen in the future in order to reconcile the two dynamics of private and community feelings. The design, and Mark, could you put up that? I've got one picture to show. And this is a little diagram that shows two options. And the drawing on the left is what we're proposing to do. The drawing on the right addresses this back-in-the-saddle idea that's been put out. And as been mentioned here, the primary visibility of anything on this site is not from the south, but is from the east and the west. And of course, on this, these diagrams, north is up. And so if we did the back-in-the-saddle plan to have a square footage of around 4,000 feet and a guest house, I would have to have a linear house, which would be in a north-south direction. And the driveway would have to come out and around. And the hammerhead would have to be out on the southerly part of the pad area. The garage would have to enter someplace to the north part of the house. But to be able to achieve the turnaround, we'd have to come out to the larger area. Nobody, including the M B A R, likes that solution. The owner of the project, the M B A R, and the fire department. He, Mr. Langhorn does not like the idea that you'd have to drive by a burning house before he could park his fire truck. So this has been an important element in the design of the house, the fire truck turnaround. But also, what's important is visibility. And as you can see from the drawing on the left, our proposed design, we don't have such a long, linear presentation. In fact, this was a major point as part of the B A R approval that we could plant significantly at, in the area of the hammerhead to disassociate the two structures and present less of a lengthy face to both the west and the east. And I'm able to do that by having an L-shaped house because I'm able to put the square footage of the house in a east-to-west direction. So from the west and the east, you don't see such a lengthy building. In terms of visibility of the house, the visibility is, is not that significant from the south. We are set back far enough. And the nature of the wall and the landscaping that Mr. Mafus will describe to you will mitigate significant visibility of this structure. I just submit to you from an architectural point of view, as the architect of the project, that this is a thoughtful, carefully worked-out design that is minimally visibly invasive and that we have worked hard to develop a project that will be, would be acceptable to both the planning staff and the M B A R. Do I like the first project we submitted a year ago? I thought it worked and it more closely matched the needs of the owner. The owner, Mr. Lagura, is a partner in the ownership of the property. But he has always felt that if he could get the kind of design approved that he would like to have to live in, he would live in the project. And that's why he would buy out the other owners. And that's why we called it the Lagura Project. How he feels now, I don't know. He's come so far along, the time-wise. I don't know if he's still willing to live in this house. I'm not sure. But the fact is, it was a process that we went through, that we started on, and have wound up with this, and this is acceptable to the owner. And so I would like to turn over now to Max, to Sam Mafus, who will tell you about the landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Easton.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Before Mr. Easton goes away, could I just ask a question? And this is language that you've read, we've read, I'm struggling with. I don't know who else to ask. You're an established professional. "The structure should be subordinate in appearance to natural land form." Can you speak to that issue?
You know how I've always interpreted that as to, say, if the site is viewed, or the primary areas from where the site is viewed, if it's a dead-level site out in the middle of the desert, then a flat-roofed house maybe is appropriate. If you're in a hillside environment, it would be appropriate if the roofs flowed with the angles and the pitches of the surrounding mountains. So the structure was, if not necessarily subordinate, because that's really a very vague phrase, at least would be in harmony, which would be a better word. Because what does subordinate really mean? It means if you have a mountain top, probably you shouldn't build on top of the mountain if that cut the profile. And in many communities, if, if it is a particular ridge line that cuts a profile against the sky, you're not able to build on the, on that ridge line. Or you have to build at a very low standard. This particular site has a mountain backdrop. You, wherever you view this house from, you've got a mountain backdrop. And these roof forms, I feel, echo that form. And therefore, the house is subordinate to these roof forms. And you know, a powerful part of our approval from the M B A R was they're making a site visit out there. And, and the neighbors had all made their presentations to them about the visibility of this house. And they went out there and said, my God, every house around here is very, very visible, including the Peterson House, which is huge house with big sloped Normandy-style roost, the slate finish on it, very visible house. And they said, they came back, the M B A R said, that's the, it's like the pot calling the kettle black here. You know, in regard to the visibility of our project compared to these other ones.
The other one that you designed?
I've designed a few, but I've always tried to blend them in.
Let me ask you this.
I did not design the Petersons' house, though, I gotta tell you that.
No. So I think, I think you feel that if there's a mountain backdrop, there's no intrusion into the skyline, per se.
The house does not cut a profile against the skyline. And that's typically what I find in the other communities I do work in also. And the fact that this house, from the south and from all angles, has a mountain backdrop, I feel this house is subordinate to the natural land forms. And the roof lines are in harmony with the land forms.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Sam Mafus, the landscape architect for the Lagura Project. And I want to bring your attention to, again, the question that keeps coming back. How is this new project and the proposed project we're looking at compared to the one that you looked at in January? And I want to go back to the landscape design and the landscape concept and the original way we looked at the house in the very beginning. Is we wanted it to blend into the natural environment of that chaparral and that rock-out crop type of mountain site. So we utilized native and Mediterranean drought-tolerant plantings throughout our original scheme to blend it in again. We located large specimen trees in the original plan, in key spots, to soften and buffer and foil the architecture as well as the site walls. We also included boulders in the original plan as well as stone walls. We did do some clearing in the original design based on the fire department fuel modification, fuel management practice at the time that did a substantial amount of clearing down to essentially the ground. And then we were able to bring back new plantings in a new way for the fuel management at that time. Originally, it was much more of a, of a clearing process. Since then, and now the new proposed plan, just to stay on that topic, the fire, fuel management allows us to save native chaparral. And we are working closely with the fire department and all the approval process for the area around that needs to be cleared and saving native seaanothis, native toyon, native oaks that are in this whole area below the house, which is what we have to clear. And we will be saving that wherever possible. We will be then mosaic planting in the same areas that we proposed before, to the south, to the west, and to the east, large specimen trees. Again, to try to blend this in in a more instantaneous way as opposed to waiting for the many years that it can take landscaping to grow, of course. So I think what I'd like to do also is to say that in this new design, we have pulled the house back, we've pulled the walls in, the walls are lower. This infinity edge is only about four feet of exposure, as all these walls are about four feet of exposure in a vertical way. And all that is foiled and landscaped in the foreground, towards the city and towards the community, with ground cover, shrubs, and trees. Maybe we could visit real quickly kind of the, the slides that show the trees and the type of trees we'd be using? Okay, real quickly, let me touch on this slide. This shows the existing chaparral, shows our affected landscape area that'll be cleared out, the 100 feet. Shows that we'll be keeping, as much as we can with the fuel management guidelines, all the chaparral that's here. So we're not going to be clearing this, as one of the pictures that the Petersons showed you was a clear site all the way down to the bottom that they're now having to try to reclaim. We will be saving as much as we can. We will be restoring with a biologist this whole area with all native plantings as well as some of the Mediterranean plantings up close to the house. So if we could go to the slide that shows the trees. It's been commented in some of the meetings, the association had some questions about landscaping. Can we really get the kind of landscaping that would give us some instantaneous and some, some softening so that the community doesn't have to look at all the walls and all the architecture from the very beginning? Locally here, we can find, this is a 48-inch box tree that is of full and very healthy size. This is done very commonly in my business and very common throughout the entire Montecito and Santa Barbara area, where we use large specimens in, in an effort to try to instantly bring the landscaping in and around new architecture and new walls. So we're using 60-inch box, 48-inch box. This is a 60-inch box tree, 14 to 15 feet tall by nine feet wide, very full, very healthy. Other comments about will these trees actually be able to live and survive up there, I think is a good topic to touch on. We will be using boulders, we'll be using tree wells. We will be bringing in good soil where we've cut the, the site down to actually make tree wells for the topsoil to be more than adequate for these trees to get established. A comment was made about the oak trees and how they're small. Actually, oak trees appreciate some stress. And they grow in sandstone. And they grow in rock, as you see in many of the natural canyons and natural situations along foothills. So the oak tree, as well as the olive trees, the toyones, the seaanothis, all the trees that we've, and shrubs we've included in our landscape plan are very indigenous to this site, very indigenous to the whole chaparral and front range. We will be taking great pains at making sure that the type of landscape whom we proposed will be adequately funded and adequately established in, in all the best practices that we know so that instantly these things will be doing the kind of... that we know, so that instantly, these things will be doing the kind of softening and the kind of blending that I touched on in the beginning. Again, boulders, um, the one elevation, maybe the front elevation to the south. One of the things that this design is, is, um, done is, is incorporated...
Yeah, the one that shows the boulders, kind of, the front, the front steps?
Throughout the comments that were made, uh, in the ongoing process of the Architecture Review Committee and the MBAR looking at this, uh, the architecture wanted to grow out of the site and be much more natural. This rock-out crop, as it's presented in this elevation, actually exists on-site. We're going to be using that in the front of these four-foot walls. The walls will be stone. If you look at the site from any vantage point, from Belo Vista and Romero, uh, there are rock-out crops everywhere. We're blending this with the rest of the hillside's indigenous look. So, we also are going to create with these same kinds of boulders, tree wells for these oak trees and all the different specimens in the foreground. So, again, the idea of the landscape architecture was to blend this to this ridgeline, to blend this in, as, as the surrounding area kind of is already got this native look.
Mr. Mafus, I believe Commissioner Overall has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, if you could back up for a second, just to the conversation about the size of the trees.
Yes.
You indicated that the 60-inch box was 14 to 15 feet in height. How about the other sizes that you're proposing to use?
Well, uh, Commissioner Overall, I think this is one example of what a 60-inch box could be. We can find broader and taller ones, this is just one example I took a picture of. But the 48-inch box trees will be in the 10 to 12-foot range by 10 to 12-foot wide. I think the other picture is a 48-inch box. This shows nine or 10 feet by eight or nine, or 10 feet. It's more of a round, thick mass, and I think that works in our favor. The broader they are, from the sightlines from the community and sightlines from the actual neighbors, these broad trees will give us the kind of screening that I'm hoping to do, uh, as you can see on the model, uh, in the foreground to the south and, and east and west. We don't really need height, we, we more or less need width to do some of the screening and furling for the, uh, for the type of buffering and type of blending that we're after. But this is a readily available, uh, size. We can get them larger and thinner. Uh, they're right here in Copanaria, they're coastal grown, they have substantially healthy systems in terms of their root, and, and so, we, we, we know that this can be easily achieved. Any other questions at the time?
I have a question for you. According to the plan, there's, there's about 450 feet of retaining, uh, um, could you address the nature of that retaining wall and the, why that amount of retaining wall is required?
It's kind of a, um...
And I guess I'll tie that into the, to the fill aspects of the project.
I think one of the...
There's a fair amount of fill here, which, it seems to me we have the amount of vegetation removal, um, the amount of fill and the amount of retaining wall are related in this and are, are part of the visual, um, impact of this on the community.
In the early design, to go back and compare, we had a substantial garage addition and turnaround in this area, where there was a tall wall that's exposed, we've pulled that in. The wall that you're referring to is all the way around this part of the perimeter, Mr. Barrett, and it's, uh, it's cutting this down and not taking that grade that's now eight to nine to 10 feet lower than the existing site, and trying to blend it down the hill with new fill. So, this four-foot wall allows us some topsoil, a little bit of, of, of an area off to the south side, uh, to grow the plantings and to have some outdoor spaces. Also, this four-foot high wall blends with these rock-out crops and some of this planting at that low height. Part of it is to, to control the drainage, and part of it is to control the erosion and some of the establishment of this, this landscape plan that we have. And I think, uh, any type of hillside home, as you saw in that other slide, when you don't do this kind of controlled drainage, you have some landslide issues, you have some issues that are of mass wasting that we don't, we're not going there, based on the geology and based on our good design ethic.
I'm, I'm sure that's correct. The, the one thing that it would appear to me, though, is part of the visual impact of projects like this is, is the fact that there is a lot of retaining wall and the, the speed of the growth of plants. And four feet's pretty tall, and a lot of those pictures, you know, you never get rid of that retaining wall look around the, um, perimeter of a project. And, and the, the residences seem to blend better into the hillside when they, they sort of slope down naturally versus, um, reach an abrupt edge. And I just wonder if you explored that as part of the potential to make this fit more with the natural landform?
Well, again, I think, uh, we've broken that right here, uh, for stair access. This little light, actually darker line here is kind of a little maintenance trail for, to make sure that we can, uh, get to and, and keep the fuel management, uh, requirements met each year, as well as, you know, making sure all the landscaping we proposed for screening, uh, gets proper maintenance. Part of it is too, that we're looking to keep some of these larger trees at the level of the house and not slope away. We'd like to keep that, a shade element and a, a softening element in this area. We did break it here. We do need it along this side, because it's quite steep, and this side. Opening up this area is something that we explored and could be, could be explored some more, uh, to, to your point.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Barrett, could I make a few comments?
Sure.
In regard to that?
Can I, I, I just thought I'd mention, we were hoping to, um, to finish up here. I think we're going to finish the applicant's, um, or excuse me, the, yeah, the applicant's presentation here. And then, we've got a number of speaker slips, there's no way we're going to finish before lunch. I understand there's a couple people that might need to speak before lunch. If you could give me an idea who that would be and whether we could accommodate you or not? If there's many, if there's more than a couple, I won't be able to help you.
Looks like there are two of them up here.
Yeah. And now, we're getting up to five. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how, I'll, I'll tell you what, I can, I can take a couple, maybe three, but we're going to break for lunch here, and within the next 20 minutes, we'll say, at a maximum. So, if you would.
Mr. Barrett. Mark, could you put up the elevations, just briefly? I just want to, uh, address the wall issue, because what we have tried to do is blend the wall into the site. So, here you can see from the east, the wall consists of some boulders and a stairway access. And we don't have any wall, uh, there to the right, Mark. And, um, south elevation, the boulder-out crop will help make a setting for the wall. And, uh, then let's look at the west. And you can see that the, the retaining wall is really not very high along the west side, it's less than four feet. And I do believe that, uh, the landscape that we are able to put in there will be able to provide very good screening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, could I?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I, could I ask a question? My understanding is that we're cutting down the site. I mean, the site is actually getting cut down, okay? Um, is it, as I think Commissioner Barrett started down this path, is, are the walls there, Mr. Easton, to actually retain some of the fill on-site?
That, that's my assumption.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head here. Does that apply to walls?
As you might, might notice, a point I do want to make, that there is, the way we've done the site, there are no exposed, cut, or fill slopes. There are retaining walls and cut slopes in relation to the driveway. But in regard to the house, there's no exposed, cut, and fill slopes that we have to deal with and mitigate the impact of. What we're doing with the wall is, as Mr. Mafus pointed out, allowing, um, us to fill against that wall and create soil for planting. Uh, the problem that we have is this site is rock. And so, we have very little export in the excavation. We're going to get the rock, uh, from the excavation of this site to be able to veneer these walls and, and to put rock around the site. And so, in order to enhance the planting ability, we want to be able to have a pocket of soil running around that we can plant in. And, uh, this also goes for these other trees around here. And, uh, we're, uh, Mr. Mafus and I experienced with dealing with hillside sites and excavating a large pocket, filling it with soil and the planting, and strategically being able to plant in rock situations. And, uh, so, we do need soil. And this, uh, arrangement behind the wall does give us a chance then to have that kind of soil, and it'll enable us to not only plant planting from, uh, down below that will grow up to screen the wall, but to have planting that will grip over the top of the wall and mitigate the look of a wall and provide a green, uh, surrounding of the, of the house. Believe me, we are, um, going to make this work. None of us want to have this house be an ugly sore thumb that ruins this community.
Commissioner Overall.
Mr. Easton, what, um, what is the, um, height of the, for want of a better description, the leveling of the knoll? How much is that being reduced? It's on the plans, but I don't have it readable in front of me.
It's, um, the, the present topography is a, it comes up to a little point and then drops off. So, at the very height of that point, I believe it's eight or nine feet.
Okay.
And then, we are coming to the, to the height of the natural grade around the perimeter of the pad area here, that you can see there on the model or on the plan, um, uh, that we are having the pad elevation be about two feet higher than the grade, the natural grade at that point of where the wall occurs. So, we can have a couple of feet of topsoil in there.
Okay. Um, I, I think now is the appropriate time. I actually have several, um, questions. And Mr. Mafus may want to answer part of this, but I, I noticed in the history of this project, the original proposal was for, requirement was elimination of a half acre, 22,000 square feet of vegetation. Then it went to 27, and now it's 60. And I don't understand what the, what's happened to the project that, that changed the requirement.
I don't think 60 is the right number at all. I think the top of the knoll that we're dealing with, with fire clearance, is about an acre of, of clearing that needs to happen, that's 40-some thousand. And that, again, is a mosaic of clearing, because now we can save some of the, the native chaparral that's there. We don't have to clear it completely. Commissioner Overall.
Um, maybe, uh, Ms. Mafus would like to comment.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, um, that quantity comes, the 22,000 square feet related to just the clearance that had to do with the proposed development of the house and driveway and so forth, the 60,000 includes not only the development, the vegetation that's going to be removed as a result of the development, but also the vegetation that's going to be required as, um, a part of the fire clearance, which includes...
Okay. Thank you. Um, now I got it, thank you. I guess the next, uh, couple of questions relate to, to budgets. Um, we have seen in the community over a period of time, people coming in with great plans, um, then the reality of having to pay for it sets in, and we have people come back with changes to those plans that are substantially different and may or may not be upheld by, you know, the Planning and Development Department. They may not, may not remember what the thinking was at the time of the approval. So, I guess the, the question I have is, two budgets. Have you, have you developed any sense of a landscape budget for what you're proposing here? That's one question. And then the second relates to the restoration plan and whether is, there is a budget for that restoration plan?
Um, to answer the first question, um, we have developed a budget of the softscape and the irrigation systems that it would need to take care of the, the slope. And again, we're going to be dealing with, as drought-tolerant and, and sustainable of plantings, as the chaparral is in its nat- native condition. So, a lot of it will be drip, but we have developed a landscape budget. It's, uh, it's in the 300,000-plus range. And I think that is what I've discussed with, uh, the owners. They understand the commitment that's being made to this project and to this site, and they're fully aware of, uh, of that commitment being something upheld. So, when we commit to box specimens needing to deal with, uh, you know, certain conditions of, of installation, that means cranes and other, other abilities to put these trees in, so we don't damage the hillside, the owners and, and the project is fully aware of that. Uh, as far as restoration, Catherine Marinlaub, our biologist, is here. She is engaged in a restoration plan that was required by the county and planning staff that will, of course, need monitoring and an annual report that will be, uh, something that, that the planning department will be looking at on annual basis to see how things are establishing, are they establishing, do they need a replacement? So, uh, the owners committed to that, yes.
Is there a budget established for that at this point?
Um, I don't have the budget, but it certainly, uh, is a monthly undertaking in terms of maintenance and an annual budget. Uh, it, it is actually something that the county will, will require a bond, and that amount of money will be set aside to maintain and make sure that that five-year period is respected.
Okay. Um, and I guess one other quick question related to the, um, the site plan itself. There, in the architectural guidelines, I believe it was the architectural guidelines, there was a requirement, um, under some circumstances, to calculate the changes in the runoff, uh, due to the amount of development on the site. And I wondered, I'm not 100% that it's, uh, sure that it's applicable here, but I wondered whether or not it did apply and whether or not it had been done.
Uh, Commissioner Overall, we have developed a drainage plan, and there are, uh, installed as part of the road design, um, culverts and drains, uh, down to the water course that crosses under Romero Canyon. And we have in place there a engineered, um, basin and, uh, holding area, which will give us a chance to control the amount of flow, uh, off the property. This has been engineered by Bob Flowers of Flowers and Associates. And we are going to, um, have that system take the, uh, drainage water from the hardscape and the roof areas. And so, we shouldn't really be having any drainage issues that would, um, affect the surrounding landform, um, unlike the house that was just shown as an example, which is a terrible example. That's almost 100% slope there on that side, that photograph. We have nothing like that, that we have to deal with, um, in regard to this house.
But I think, though, the long and short answer is that those calculations have, if they're required, have not yet been made. Is that, is that fair?
We've allowed for it, but those calculations have not been done. But there was an assumed calculation for actually the larger house, that, so we should have plenty of capability.
Okay.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Mafus, just one quick follow-up on Mr. Overall's questions. How do you advise your clients as to, um, the landscape plan that is part of the permit process? For instance, is it, is it best efforts, do you think? Is there a guarantee to the community that this will happen? How, how is that done? I mean...
Uh, again, the, the, the planning staff's involved because of the restoration aspect of it, the biological overlay that this is in. So, there is a monitoring that county will be, uh, involved with. Professionally, myself, uh, my plans for 20, 25 years, uh, have been followed through with the quality of my involvement. The type of contractors, the type of material, the type of installation, the type of quality, um, is, uh, is a reputable thing. I think none of us want to see anything that's going to be an eyesore, that is attached to our name. And so, I think it's, it's almost a professional follow-up. I would be involved with these owners, as I have been for two years, making sure that the road and the driveway is establishing itself correctly. We've still got work to do there, we're committed to the driveway. Finally, Mother Nature is cooperating a little bit. Yesterday, we got some things, uh, out of the sky that helped my case in terms of this natural environment in the hillside. Uh, the chaparral responds very quickly. I think from the rain of yesterday, you'll see the green of what, uh, we want that driveway to be, and as quickly as it can recover it will because of Mother Nature, but because of our stewardship and our, uh, follow-through to the commitment of what this landscape plan means to, uh, to the owners and to Mr. Easton and myself.
Well, I guess my concern is, in spite of your very best efforts and professional, um, involvement, uh, it's going to, this success will require, um, watering, uh, feeding of things, of plants, uh, water, we can all feel is going to become an increasingly major issue. water we can all feel is going to become an increasingly major issue. Have your projects failed because as you walk away, the owner doesn't continue? Has that happened to you often?
No. No. I think the value of the property in San Barbara community is such that people become good stewards of their property, and this is like any of those. So they, the ones that I've been involved with, there is a diligence, diligence to the maintenance. That's a big part of the success of a landscape plan, as you're, as you're alluding to. And...
Sam, have you ever seen, excuse me, Mr. Mafus, have you ever seen the county come out and knock on a client's door and say, "Ah, this doesn't seem to be growing quite as nicely as you had promised." Has that ever happened to you?
The county stays involved with the projects. So I don't know that it's happened recently, but, but, you know, there is a monitoring of what, what properties look like from the neighborhood. But, you know, I think it's, it's upon us to make sure that this, this will establish itself. And I think that commitment is, is going to be made and certainly is something that we'll follow through with.
Because in this zone, this is so critical. It's, it's not just having a nice-looking house. This is really important.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree.
Commissioner Phillips, could I, I'm going to ask you if...
Commissioners, to stop, yeah.
Yeah, to stop. I'd really like to let the applicant finish its presentation. We have plenty of time to ask them questions later, and I think we need to think about having, letting everybody have some lunch here in a few minutes. So if you would please.
Thank you, Chairman Barrick and members of the commission. My name is Peter Candy. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hollister and Brace, representing the project applicant. The focus of my presentation will be on appellant's arguments. The project is inconsistent with various hillside and visual protection policies set forth in the comprehensive plan, the Montecito Community Plan, and the Montecito Land Use and Development Code. As you might imagine, I have spent time carefully reviewing the grounds set forth in the appeal. What strikes me about appellant's arguments is they ignore the project's compliance with the detailed and very specific requirements applicable to hillside development in the Montecito area. Instead, appellant's base their appeal on broad policy statements in the various planning documents and on their own individual interpretation of what these policies are trying to achieve. By focusing on the general, as opposed to project compliance with specific requirements, appellant's cast the project in a negative light. They characterize the project as being too intensive for the site. They characterize it as being incompatible with the neighborhood and incompatible with the character of the surrounding natural environment. The point appellant's miss, however, is that the detailed standards applicable to hillside development are the exact standards the project must be measured against to determine its compliance with the broader policy objectives. Let me step back and explain a little bit about general planning and zoning law. The hierarchy of planning documents moves from the general to the more specific. The county comprehensive plan sits atop this hierarchy, establishing the broad policy requirements. As one moves down through the hierarchy, through community plans, specific plans, and zoning ordinances, the requirements become more site-specific. At the bottom of the hierarchy are the architectural guidelines and development standards that control aspects of site development. California's general planning and zoning laws require vertical consistency throughout this hierarchy. Each successive and more detailed planning document is required to be consistent with the broader policy level document above it. In this way, the more specific requirements implement and give effect to the broader requirements established at the higher level. In the present appeal, you'll find appellant's focus their arguments on their interpretation of vague policy statements found in the higher-level planning documents. Appellants conveniently ignore the project's compliance with the architectural guidelines and development standards applicable to hillside development in this area. They do this in an attempt to divert attention away from the fact that if the project complies with specific requirements, the project per se complies with the policies the requirements seek to implement. Probably the best example of this is appellant's reliance on the broad statement in the RMZ ordinance effectively prohibiting, quote, "intensive development" in the Montecito hillside area. Appellants focus on the word intensive, claiming the proposed project is too intensive for the site. But how are we to determine what is too intensive or not? The only way we know is by looking to the specific detailed requirements set forth in the architectural guidelines. In all aspects of size, bulk, and scale, the project is consistent with the standards established for the area. The project is 40% below the floor area requirements for an eight-acre parcel in the hillside area. The project meets all height limitations. The project does not propose any accessory structures or related improvements that are not specifically allowed under the ordinance. The project has been designed to fit within and flow with the natural contours of the land. The project is consistent with the detailed grading requirements set forth in the standards, and the project is consistent with all retaining wall, building material, and landscape plan requirements set forth in the standards. It is these specific requirements and the project's consistency with them that gives us a reference point for determining project consistency with the policy objectives set forth in the comprehensive plan, the community plan, and the Montecito Land Use and Development Code. Taking a project that is consistent in all regards with these, with these established standards and saying the project is inconsistent with the policies in effect for the area is the same as saying the standards fail to implement the policies. That makes no sense. If the project is consistent with the standards, it is consistent with the policies as a simple matter of general planning and zoning law. That'll complete my presentation, as well as the applicant's presentation. We appreciate your paying attention to us, listening to us, and we would like to reserve time for rebuttal after public comment.
You will have that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the appellant and the applicant's presentation. I'm going to reserve here another, I'll say, maximum of 10 minutes for public comment. So I know there was a number of you that wanted to speak, and one in particular, I see, was Carol Lee Krieger. So I'll take you first, Carol Lee, and then Sally Kinsell and...
Do you have, do you have people that want to leave? Because I, it really isn't going to make any difference to us what order we have them in. So no, I, I'm not going to do that. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. My name is Carol Lee Krieger, and I live at 808 Romero Canyon Road. And I'm here today on behalf of my husband and myself, as we live right down the hill from this proposed project. I also have a letter from former mayor Sheila Lodge that I would like to read into the record.
Um, no.
I can't do that. Or can I leave the letter?
You can certainly submit that to us.
And if you would make copies and pass it around. She is opposed to this project the way it's been presented, as I am. I think I mischecked the box. I am supporting the appeal of the Petersons, as is Sheila Lodge. As a neighbor living right downhill from this proposed project, what concerns me the most is the fact that there is no drainage plan overall, master drainage plan for Montecito. And Joan Wells told me that this is a major concern of hers as well, and that each project has to be considered just one at a time. And what I'm concerned about is that with all of the scarring and stuff that's already been done, that we are going to have drainage problems in the future. I'm also very concerned that this is a very precedent-setting approval that you have before you today, as there are between 45 and 68 other hillside parcels in the Montecito foothills that will be impacted by whatever your decision is today. So please consider very carefully. And, you know, we are all very concerned about what happens in, in all over Montecito. And I really do support what the Petersons are doing. I'm also concerned about the lack of the cumulative impacts from the very beginning. It seems to me that, you know, to come in with an 800-square-foot guest house and then another larger house and then whatever, it's not, it's not in keeping, certainly with SEQA, where all the cumulative impacts must be presented from the very beginning. So in conclusion, I would just like to urge you to consider this in light of all of the drainage impacts that it's going to have on all of us, and also how it's going to be a precedent-setting thing for the future of Montecito. Thank you.
If you would, hold on for a second. Just, could you give me 15 minutes or 30 seconds of what you would like, what you feel this project should look like? I know you don't like the one that's there.
No, I do not like the one that's there. I think if the project was cut back...
What does that mean?
Considerably, reduced in size maybe by half, and set back into the mountain instead of being exposed out at the, at the bluff, I think that that might work. But what they've done already, just in building the road on the basis of an 800-square-foot guest house, I find, and then to come in later, you know, with a larger proposal, and then to say, "Well, we already have this big road, so, you know, of course, everyone knew there was going to be a bigger project." I think that that's not justified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it John Warner?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm John Warner, and I was an original member of the Montecito General Plan Advisory Committee and was involved in the, in the development of these guidelines that we have today. The, I also live on Cowles Road, which has a north view, and I have a 40-mile foothill view along, along the San Inez Mountains. We, so I'm very sensitive to what happens on those foothills. When the General Plan Advisory Committee was developing these guidelines, they spent an inordinate amount of time trying to protect the view of the foothills from the community. And there was every effort and every intention to minimize any kind of development on the hills. I mean, it was everyone's nightmare that this would start looking like Bakersfield with big houses stuck on top of every knoll of the Sierras behind Bakersfield. And nobody in Montecito wanted to see that here. The, my view is every day on, on the hillside, and it's a, there's a few houses that have slipped through the guidelines and that are really visual scars to Montecito. And they're exacerbated by the fact that once you own one of these houses, unless you're a madman, you'll clear all the, the chaparral around your house to any extent possible in order to keep the fires from running, running through your property. So not only do we have these huge, a few of these huge houses coming along now, but we also have these big areas of clearing around them. And I think the bottom line, in all deference to Sam, is fuel is fuel. And if there's something growing there when these fires come along, it's, it's going to contribute to the problem dramatically. The, let's see, the other, the thing about the scale of this house is that since the general plan went into effect, we've all seen these games that Carol Lee just referred to, the 800-square-foot this and the 800-square-foot that that are outside the FARs. The bottom line here is that this structure, this represents over 7,000 square feet of construction. And that's 10% greater than the 6,600 square feet that are allowed in the, in the foothill region above Montecito. So I would ask you to very carefully consider this, and it, I think for the betterment of the community, it would probably be the appropriate thing to support the appeal. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you the same question, which is...
What would I do?
Well, how would you change this project to make it fit with what you think it should be?
Um, you know, I used to sit in these endless meetings, and last year I was on the, the land use committee. And I have this horrible habit of jumping in and really hammering things around. I'm an engineer, and so I have all kinds of solutions. I don't know that I should get into the details. Bob presented a pretty, you know, plausible explanation of what would happen if you moved back into the saddle. I'm not sure that that's exactly true. I'm not sure that the house has to be linear. There are all, there are H shapes and L-shaped houses and numerous ways to do it. I think anything that would minimize the impact beyond where it is now would benefit the community in Montecito. And if you want me to start drawing, I will, but I don't think we have the time.
You're welcome to spend your lunch hour that way if you'd like. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sally Kinsell.
I think it's good afternoon now, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I believe it is.
And commissioners, my discussion is about the intention of the community plan. The decision that you will make today will affect the other 60 or so hillside lots if the commission allows the project to proceed as it is now proceed, now proposed. Excuse me. Your interpretation will be used for every hillside permit application that follows. That would be a tragedy and will scar and change the complexion of our community forever. I was chairman of the General Plan Advisory Committee when the community plan was written and then co-chairman. The committee was determined that our hillsides, the backdrop of our entire community, would be protected visually and physically. We spent a considerable amount of time on the hillsides. Remember, it took six years to complete the plan. We knew that development would occur on the mountains, but we felt that what was written, if adhered to, would protect our Montecito's hillsides and its resources. I add that our Montecito community plan, community, the whole community, approved of the plan and the architectural standards and guidelines. Much has been said that a certain amount of square footage is allowed for the lot in question. The maximum amount of square footage is not a right to build up to that amount. The site must be considered. This project has been in the permit process for some time, and there are those who feel that enough is enough for the applicants. The project has been turned down or delayed because the proposed project was considered inappropriate each time it was presented. Please stand by our community plan and its intentions. I ask you to grant the Peterson appeal and protect Montecito's hillsides for all of our community. Thank you. And if you want to ask me...
You know what's coming next.
Okay. I think the, the building has to be pushed back from the bluff. It will make it less obtrusive and probably will have to be smaller. Okay. Thank you.
Claire Gottsinger.
Commissioner Gottsinger.
Yes.
This is actually a question specifically for Ms. Kinsell, but it is, well, it is. It's actually for the last three speakers, because all of you suggested that it might be appropriate when responding to Chairman Barrick's question to push the house back further on the slope. My question to the three of you is, did any of you see the story poles when they were up?
The answer to that is no. When I say push back, maybe that also means shrinking the size, anything to make it less visible.
So, yeah, well, the reason I'm asking the question is, is I'm wondering, you did see the story poles. Thank you. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. I'm curious.
And I've walked out on the, the site, and I'm just shocked that anything is being built up there, quite frankly, because it's such a small site.
Well, the lot has existed since 1959, so there's been certain rights available to whoever owned this lot since 1959...
I understand.
...to be able to build, to be built.
But it's pretty obvious that...
This is one of the lots we looked at when we wrote the community plan.
Since the, the price of the, the sale of that lot was so little, that it's obvious that the...
Since the price of the sale of that lot was so little, that it's obvious that the actual buildability had to have been taken into consideration, or it would have sold for a lot more than what it did.
Well, maybe.
Let's see, we have one more speaker, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Kate Gura, and I live at twenty-three ninety-five Bella Vista. And I know somebody else has to read a letter into the record. I'm wondering if you said no just because of time, or you're not allowing that at all?
No.
Okay, great, okay.
Well, we're happy to read it, but it takes too long to read them.
I think that one of the things, I'm very conscious of the fact that the applicant has spent a lot of time and money to develop the site, and I don't have a philosophical problem with people owning land and building something on there. However, I think that the focus shouldn't be on how much they've conceded, or how far they've ratcheted down from the original plan. I think it should be looked wholly from what was the plan for this area in the first place. And like Carol Lee, you know, I walk that area a lot. I see it all the time, and obviously, one of the most precious things about Montecito is the fact that we have those hills, and it's not like being in the Hollywood Hills, where there's houses all over the place. And I think in an area where that is rural like that, and expectation of limited residential use, to me, that does not sound like seventy-five hundred square feet of a house, a pool, a guest house, trellises, and I expected, like, also that Carol Lee just mentioned, when they bought the land, clearly there were some restrictions on there. It's not like a five-acre parcel down in Romero for five million dollars, where you expect you can build a large house. You're in the mountains. And I would say the same thing. Just figure out a way to make it substantially smaller, and set it back so that, to the best of their ability, it can be tucked in and just be part of the natural landscape, and that we don't have a situation where we're just looking, as we're walking around the mountainside, we're looking at just that house, and that house, and that house. It just disappears as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll take one last, and then we're going to wrap it up, and we'll come back here at quarter to two.
Thank you. My name's Don Hughes. I live at twenty-six hundred Bella Vista. I didn't realize I'd have to apologize for its existence, but it was the first example of houses that everybody wishes weren't there, shown by Mrs. Peterson. It's the first time I've heard these kinds of objectives, sorry, objections to our place. Our nearby neighbors have always been complimentary about it. Perhaps Mr. Easton, Bob Easton was the architect for our place as well. Perhaps he'll join me in its defense. I don't know if he'll do that or not. It isn't as if we set out to be insensitive to the surroundings when this house was built. Our original charge to Mr. Easton was to duplicate a house which existed on Park Lane, which had a very high, steep roof. And he did not want to do that. Our roof pitches are very modest, and they blend in with the surroundings much, much better than what we had envisioned. When we bought this parcel, there was a pad already prepared for building, and it had behind it the usual shelf for water tanks. I don't know, maybe thirty feet up slope, something like that. Rather than put our water tanks there, which are fed by a well that we have on the property, and we use for irrigation of the landscape, we planted that area in trees and shrubs. And we used a helicopter to airlift two five-thousand-gallon water tanks, and place in the trees up above, three hundred feet up the slope. And they can't be seen from anywhere. And that was expensive. I don't know how much we've spent on landscaping. I don't have a dollar figure, but I think if I did, it would be impressive. It would certainly impress me. We have planted more than a hundred trees on the property. Oak, toyon, seaanothus, and so forth, compatible with the surroundings, to make the place blend in. And I don't consider it the conspicuous eyesore that has been implied by my other speakers, which is beside the point of what I came here to say in the first place. I've got a photo here. I don't know if it's possible to project this or not. I don't have any slides. But this is the view from our property to the west.
You know, we're going to, as soon as you reach the end of your time period, we're going to end, so you've got about one minute. So you've got to wrap it up.
May I just ask the location of his home? Please say that.
Sure, well, you did.
Okay, well, if you look to the west from our house, you see this building site. It's very conspicuous, with the driveway and so forth. And what we want to see done is for the landscaping that is associated with this project to be put in place, so that our view will be improved. And if that is done, I think the house is an attractive design. I think it will blend in nicely with the surroundings. I think it will enhance everybody's property value, and it will certainly improve the view from our house. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. And we're going to adjourn until a quarter to two. Our public comment period, and I'm going to go right into our list of people that have put in speaker slips, and I will start with Candace Bergy. No Candace Bergy. David, oh, you are here, followed by David Goldman.
Mr. Chair, before Ms. Bergy starts, do we have to vote, do we have to put all these letters that we're receiving into the public record? Do we have to take an action on those?
I think we do, but I think we can probably do them all at the end. We may get more.
You want to do it at the end? Okay, fine. I just, they keep piling up, and I, you know, I know there's some procedure to manage them.
Mr. Chair, it's letters over a page in length that you received afternoon on Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Please proceed, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. My name is Candace Bergy, and I'm here, I want to have the appeal dropped. I feel this project has received a preliminary approval from the BAR and from the Planning Commission, and it's consistent with size, bulk, and scale, and what surrounds it. It will have a minimal visual impact to the community. Mr. Easton and his architectural group has reduced the size and stories of this project, moved the house back, reduced the retaining walls, and worked with the neighborhoods and the necessary agencies. The Montecito Association has chosen not to support this project. They say it's not, they say it does not conform with the community plan. One wonders why the Montecito Association chooses to be against this project, and yet keeps silent when the Miramar project is completely out of compliance with the community plan. Is it personal selection by members, or is it because of the proximity of the project to board members? The association has a history of this behavior. I think the testimony from the association should be deleted because of private donations has turned this association into a special interest group, picking and choosing projects. This is a form of discrimination, and we can't have it both ways. Mr. Easton's architectural team has worked hard. We're fortunate to have an architect, Bob Leikbarb, Easton, of his caliber designing in our town, and even better, living in our town. He gets it. He's not an LA developer. He has a wonderful track record in our community, and I ask your support for this project, and give the owners the right to build on this project. And I also think it's important, since the community plan has been written, and those people are still with us on this earth, that we get it figured out once and for all, how that interpretation is going to be decided by your board, the MBR, and also the planning and development communities. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm David Goldman, and I'm at twenty-five hundred Bella Vista. I happen to be the adobe house, which is above and to the east of this property, and I'm going to see it no matter what it looks like. The house itself has evolved through its sessions with the BAR into really, a really good-looking house. I think it's really very nice. It's a fine piece of architecture. And its size, frankly, does not bother me. In Montecito, a house of four thousand feet, or larger if you want to count the overhangs and the guest house and so on, that's not a huge house. To me, the size is nothing. What I am concerned with is what almost everyone else has spoken so far has been concerned with, which is sighting on the location. Is that sighting right for our mountains? That's what we're talking about, really, is what is right for our mountains. And one of the things the guidelines say, the guidelines for the Montecito mountain area there say, is limited visibility. When you've got it out fairly far, even though it has moved back to some degree, the visibility is still not very limited at all. It would seem to me that the way to solve that, to some degree, is to move it back, to follow those guidelines. Nobody here, I don't think anybody, even Bob, is looking to make a statement on the mountainside. And we've got a bunch of houses up there who have tried, which have tried to make statements, and you can see them from the freeway. I hope that's not the intention here. And in case we think that landscaping can disguise a statement from the freeway, we have at least, I think, two of you who earlier today mentioned the fact that that really didn't do it. And we talk about landscaping, our landscape personnel here mentioned earlier, for two years, I think, or more, he had been the steward of the landscaping there. Has anyone seen the landscaping on the road? I think so. To me, it needs to be pulled back, go to the guidelines, make it less visible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. John Gura. Probably butchered that, I apologize.
Hi, my name is John Gura, and I completely agree with, I live at twenty-three ninety-five Bella Vista, which is just south and a little, a little to the west of this property. And I completely agree with the last speaker that, I've been coming to these hearings for the last year, and each time I come, I make the same statement, which is, I think that the house should be removed, you know, back to the saddle, away from the knoll. And according to the guidelines, as the last speaker, as the last speaker said. And in Mr. White's testimony, he said that after the house that they originally put forward to this committee was rejected, they started over. And I just don't see it that way. It looks to me like the original plan has been chiseled back, but it's still, it's still an evolution of the original plan. And I think that what's needed is a new plan, where the house is just, a new house is created, or a new plan is created, where the guest house is. And Mr. Easton had said that, that it was through this process, it was after they got started in this process, that they realized how sensitive the community was to this area. And it's, I got the impression that he said if he had to do it over again, he might do it a little differently. But yet, he has the opportunity now to do it differently, and they're bringing the same program modified back to this committee, so I think that, or this commission, rather. So I would have liked to have seen him actually do what he implied he would do, which is bring a new plan or a new program. And I just have one other, or a couple other comments. Mr. Phillips, Commissioner Phillips, you had asked the question, what would, let's see, what did the language regarding subordinating to the natural landscape look like? And I think that the guidelines, as I've read them, actually address that, which is, don't put the, don't put the house on the knoll, tuck it back into the, you know, into the saddle. And if we went with Mr. Easton's definition of, of that interpretation of what subordinate means, it wouldn't apply ever, because hardly ever do we see homes on the very top of the mountain. All of these homes are blended into the, into the mountainside. I mean, there's hardly anything at the very top. So, that definition, or that qualification, would be useless if we went with their definition, or Mr. Easton's definition of, of subordinating to the natural landscape. And to answer your question, you know, what would you like to see here, as I said, you know, a house back into the, into the ridgeline. I think that I'm concerned about the drainage, as one of the prior speakers said. Having that infinity pool sitting out there, to me, seems completely inappropriate. And I don't, I don't feel they're entitled to a guest house, based on everything that I've learned. They should just have a nice-sized house where their guest house is, and it would be a great project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Victoria Green, and Dick Tilsher.
Would you take Ted Tedesco before me?
Sure. Ted?
But I was going to follow Ted.
Okay, that'll be fine. And I also have Bill Palladini, Robert Collector. I think that's everyone left. Whatever order you want to come in.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. My name is Ted Tedesco, and I'm chair of the Montecito Association Land Use Committee. Also, happy holidays. Real, I mean, this meeting started off this morning at nine o'clock with, had us all a little bit tense, and, boy, that's very uncomfortable, so I really kind of bleed for you a little bit up there, having to do, take that kind of thing, but it's unfortunate. Let me tell you something, I'm going to try to, I don't want to be redundant and go over what I know you already know our position is. I think Victoria will probably be more specific about some things, but I wanted to back up a little bit if I could. For almost forty-five years, I've been kind of a comprehensive planning zoning nut. I read these things like people read good novels, and I've read zoning codes and comprehensive plans over the years. And I've gotten to the point where I'm really sold on them. I think that that's what communities stand for. That's what the citizens believe in, because they're required to do comprehensive planning. In this case, county has done some good planning. It's sensible. And then they followed up with the required zoning. Sensible, makes sense. That's the picture. And then guidelines were added to that. It's a nice layering and a nice package of what the ten thousand people who presently live in Montecito expect. And it's what is demanded of the citizens if you want to live in this community, and that's their vision of what you want to see. As a kind of a comprehensive planning nut, when I read the Montecito community plan, and I read the county's comprehensive plan, and the requirements, and the overlays, and all of the requirements that you know, it made a nice package, taken in total. And I thought, it's quite clear what the people want. So that they have been required to do these things, they have done them, and they have some optimistic faith that people will adhere to the plan. I mean, why not? I mean, it's what they believe in, it's what government is supposed to do for all of us. We're not supposed to stay up every night to make sure that somebody is absconding with it, or whatever. We expect the agencies and the people who are put in your position to enforce or administer the plan, along with the staff, for example. So what happens in that process? I've seen that process for years and years and years. So the plan is there, and if you read the plan, you know what the guidelines are, you know what the community desires. Now, the funny thing has happened over the years is that along comes a person, corporation, a developer, call it what you will. And he or she may have different views of what he or she would like to do with this plan. And so what do they begin to do? And you've heard it all. I heard it all today. This is a complete- This is a complete compendium of every buzzword you've ever heard, and they are as follows. I won't cover them all, obviously. But, the language is unclear. Therefore, it's up to you to make these interpretations our way. Landscaping will solve everything. Native landscaping, oh, you got to make sure it's native landscaping. And it will grow and cover and hide. What I call the old crazy aunt business, you know, we got a crazy aunt, we're going to keep her in the cellar and make sure nobody ever sees her. And this building, this proposal, is going to be seen. It's going to be seen by at least the 10,000 people who live in Montecito and the visitors who come and go in Montecito. No amount of assurances is going to hide that building. So let's assume you're willing to accept the fact that this proposal is going to be seen, and it's going to be seen. It may not be seen if you stand under it, but if you move away a little bit, you're going to see them, just the way you see all the other things that are up there. Blend in, it's going to blend in well. Come on. 8,000 square foot home, all the appearances?
Ted, I've got to caution you, if, if I let you keep going on, it'll look like we're being favorites up here.
No, okay, I'll, thank you.
You're going to have to wrap it up.
All right. So, I want, just read the preamble to the Montecito Plan then for you, okay? It's very short. Are you holding me to, what, two minutes, three minutes?
It's already been three. It's past three.
I thought, since the proponents got 25 minutes, and it was an hour and a half, we'd have at least allowed two more minutes.
You're simply a member of the public.
Okay. Well, Montecito's aesthetic quality is currently considered very high. Recent subdivisions and construction of larger state homes have led to a substantial alteration in the character of portions of the community. This is particularly true in the Sheffield Road, San Leandro Lane area and the foothills. Potential continuance of this trend, future subdivisions, development of vacant parcels and reconstruction of homes could further alter the community's character. Of particular concern is the potential scarring of hillsides caused by grading in mountainous and hilly areas. That's exactly what's taking place here.
Let me ask you, you're, I'm going to have to have you finish up here, Ted.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that.
But I do have a question for you, which is, how would you change this plan? There's going to be a house there.
It's relatively easy for me to answer that question. First of all, it's not an entirely fair question, because that's not our business. We read the law, we read the requirements, what would you do? So everybody's grasping to try to give you an answer. Push it back, make it smaller, so it can't be seen, or whatever. The rez zone 40, if you read the total package of requirements, it's quite clear what can be a house.
You're not answering my question, Ted.
I don't know how to answer your question. I don't want to get into this game, it's not a bad game. I don't want to get into the game of saying, well, push it back, make it smaller, drop the guesthouse. I mean, I've heard all of those things, and I don't know what the answer is. You start, they start off with the, with the wrong premise, that in fact, you can put a very substantial parcel, develop it to a maximum extent, and you can get away with it in an R, in an R40 zone. That's why the Montecito Association didn't have anything to say about the architecture of the building. We were concerned about what is going to happen, what will happen with the next parcel, and the next parcel, and the next parcel, as they tried to do the same things with it, albeit well-intentioned. But the fact of the matter is, when it's all said and done, we're going to see that house, we're going to see that driveway that's already been whacked out of the road. It stands out, you can see it from miles away. Not fair.
Thanks for your point.
One more statement, please?
One sentence.
Okay. There may be an inclination to try to say, well, let's let these people go ahead and put 25 conditions on them. You know, the real answer there is, how do you know they're going to work? You know that building is going to get built, you know the house is going to get built.
Ted, I'm sorry, you're abusing your privileges. You're going to have to wrap it up.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Victoria Green, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Montecito Association. You have a letter that we provided to you that was passed by our board last week. You know, I think what you've been hearing a lot of is, is that there is a very clear policy framework that's in place to ensure that the natural characteristic of the community's mountain backdrop is protected. When you discussed these policies last summer in a workshop shop on the hillside development issue, you were really clear on the point that you wanted the policies and ordinance provisions applied in a way that was true to that intent of preserving the community's backdrop. For whatever reason, it seems to us that, that hasn't happened in the case of, of the approvals that have been rendered on this project. And for that reason, the Montecito Association is here today asking you to grant the appeal. With respect to the, to the reasoning behind that, we don't believe that the project meets the intent of the Resource Management Zone District. There are inconsistencies with applicable comprehensive plan policies, as well as the lack of compliance with some of the guidelines and development standards that come out of the Montecito Architectural Guidelines. With respect to the intent of the Resource Management Zone District, I think that what you really have to look at is the totality of the project that is approved on this property. I don't believe that FAR, which counts about half of the square footage of development, is an appropriate measure, or an appropriate basis for you to adopt findings that the project is limited residential development, so I'd really caution you on that. We don't believe that the over 7,200 square feet of development that has been granted these approvals is limited development and appropriate on this, on this site in the rural We don't believe that the project is consistent with some of the overarching policies of the comprehensive plan. And before I get into that, I just wanted to counter something that you heard before. I don't think that a project, that a project meets a height limit is a basis for finding that it's consistent with visual resource policy that, that says that development should be compatible with the natural characteristic of the area. So to say that meeting development standards that appear in the Architectural Guidelines, for example, means that you have satisfied broader, more general goals is, is not, I believe, a correct argument. I think what you have to find is that the project conforms with the comprehensive plan, the ordinance, and the standards in their totality. We believe that the project is inconsistent with the requirement that grading be kept to an absolute minimum. We don't believe that it preserves the natural features of the site to the maximum extent feasible. And what we would suggest is that the test for determining maximum extent feasible should be, is there a feasible alternative for development of this site that would better preserve those natural features, or would further reduce grading? That applies to the hillside protection policies of the land use element. Similarly, with visual resource policy, we don't believe that the scale of development's compatible with the character of the surrounding natural environment. And there, we're looking for development that follows the natural contours of the landscape. Finally, we think that the MBR findings were, were made in error, and believe that there are some, there's lack of compliance with the intent of the Architectural Guideline hillside standards to preserve, enhance, and protect the visual character of, and biological importance of the Montecito hillsides. I can call out some specific guidelines that I believe there are, the project does not comply with, but I know that I am out of time, and I did want to wrap up. So, we believe that the location of development, this is the Montecito Association's official position, should be reconsidered and the scale of development reduced. There are a couple of options, just to answer your question that you haven't answered yet, that we, we mentioned in our letter, and those would be...
You know it's coming.
Those would be, one option is to revert back to the house that has been approved on this property. That would further reduce grading, minimize visual impacts, et cetera, et cetera. Another option would be to push the development back behind the knoll. I can almost envision, I'm not an architect, but I can almost envision what that house might look like, and how it would peak over that knoll, with maybe the second floor above a garage, without coming out onto it and grading a flat pad in front of it. So those are a few ideas, but in closing, we would like to say that what you do will send an important message on how our hillsides will develop, and we ask that you uphold the appeal, or grant the appeal. Thanks.
Thank you, Victoria. I have a question for you. Mr. Easton had made some observations related to the location of the required fire turnaround at the top of the driveway. And how does that impact your analysis of where the house could go?
Well, I think, Mr. Chair, I think that there are options for accommodating a firetruck hammerhead that wouldn't, you know, well, I could almost, I could see something where you had one end of the hammerhead was part of your terrace, for example. It was a drivable surface, but also a surface that you might use as some of your outdoor living space. So I think that there, I don't think that the solution you saw is the only solution. I think that there are things you could do, eliminating the guesthouse, reducing the house size, that would give you other options to accommodate the hammerhead.
Did the Association take a position on what they thought an appropriate size for a residence in rez 40 was?
We did not.
Do you have an opinion?
I have a hard time with, with numbers. I think that the total amount of development, personally, I think the total amount of development is too much. There's things to look at, not including in the development of that site. You know, I think what was intended on the, in the Resource Management Zone was that you might have a mountain cottage of some sort, not an estate.
Thanks.
That's my personal, but yours, in terms of intent, that's my understanding.
Thank you very much. Dick Tilsher.
Good afternoon, Chairman Burke and Commissioner Phillips, and Commissioner Burrows, Commissioner Ogilvy, and Commissioner Gottstanger. I really wanted to just mention your names again, not that nobody knows you or anything, but, but I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. This has been a long process, and, and I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. It's not an easy decision. It's been a long process for the community when we did the general plan. We all know that it was six years and 100 meetings, but we spent a lot of time on this foothills subject. Words like pristine were used, that they remain pristine. I went back and called other people who were on GPAC. I know you have letters from Joan Wells, you've heard from Sally Cancel. I needed to refresh my memory a little bit, because your memory gets a little stale after all these years. And I had a nice, long talk with June Bajol, who was the supervising planner for the county, and who did an extremely good job. She attended almost every meeting for six years. And I said, June, what, what do you remember was limited residential use? And, and that goes to the core of, of this issue, I think. She said, it depends on the constraints on the property. It is property-specific, site-specific. And this site has a lot of constraints to, I mean, we've seen what's happened with just the roadway. There's been grading that's gone on up there, the pictures aren't pretty, but rather than go backwards, this, to me, this, this particular project is precedent-setting for two reasons. I do think it's the biggest decision that the Montecito Planning Commission will have. And when I looked, even Westmont was huge, but this is the backdrop for the whole community. This is what defines Montecito. This defines the semi-raw character of Montecito. It's, it's not the Quiloxina, it's not the Music Academy, those were all tough things, but this is something you see every day. And there's no doubt in my mind that these other parcels, whether they be 40 or 60 parcels, all the way up to Camino Cielo, will be developed someday. If you, if you allow this kind of development, you will see it. And the money will be sufficient to put the long roadways up the hills. You'll see the scarring, and it won't be pretty, and the landscaping will not do the job. See what else, what else I might have. This is precedent-setting, I think, for two reasons. It's, number one, it does set the tone for what happens in the foothills. There have been two mistakes already made up there. We already know them. We know how bad those mistakes are, we look, we look at them every day. I don't think two mistakes allows a third one. I think this is, this is really done at the beginning of foothill development. It's the beginning for a second reason in precedent-setting, because you, the Planning Commission, this is the first one you've seen. Unless I'm, unless I missed something, I don't remember any other one. If you don't allow the appeal, regardless of whether they take it to the Board of Supervisors, you've expressed your wishes that this kind of development should be allowed in the foothills. I don't think the community wanted that when they approved the community plan, and I know that members of the community, the General Plan Advisory Committee, didn't intend that ever happen. Please support the appeal. I think it's really a serious situation. Thank you.
Dick, if you would.
You're going to ask me about what, what kind of project?
Yeah.
When I, when I heard the, when it came to us, and I was on the commission, I suggested to Mr. Easton, like, 2,000 feet of house, no guesthouse, tuck it into the hillside. I'm fine with putting a basement under it. If you have a 1,500-foot basement and 2,000 square foot first-story house, one-story house, tucked into the hill, no guesthouse, not a pool, but not infinity pool. An infinity pool, in this case, does not allow for any landscaping behind it. All of that view from the west side is going to be nothing but open space, and you'll see more and more of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Palladini, followed by Robert Collector, and that's the last of the speaker slips, so if there's anybody else that wishes to address us, I'd like you to submit one.
Good afternoon. Let me start out by saying that the, the thoughts that I'm going to convey to you here in a minute are my own. I think this is an important disclosure for me to make here. I have not discussed these with my board, they're my personal comments, and I'm not speaking for the Montecito Association. I'm speaking as a private citizen of Montecito, a very concerned private citizen of Montecito. You know, I go way back with this project. I think I'm the one that took the picture that started this whole controversy one day when I went for a bike ride, and I saw what looked like a strip mine. And I was absolutely stunned, and it went out on the internet, and pretty soon, a lot of people in Montecito had that picture. And it had to do with the road, the now-famous and still very controversial road. And unfortunately, it's too late to fix the road. Except, I have some suggestions about that when I get to my comments on landscaping and the effect of landscaping on this project. Just a couple of things. I'm not going to, I'm going to just talk about a couple of specific things that I think could help this project, and I'm going to be hard-pressed to answer your question when I'm finished, if you ask it of me also. But, the first thing is infinity pools. You know, that's an interesting concept. I'm just not sure that infinity pools are appropriate in these mountainous, mountainside properties. Because, as Dick just said, and has been said before, they require certain, specific things to occur for them to be infinity pools. One is, they have to be on the edge of something, they have to be supported by a retaining wall, and landscaping is difficult, as Dick said, above it, because, that's the whole reason for having an infinity pool, is the view. As a result, that section of pool area is wide open, looking from the west to the east and seeing the house. So I would ask you to consider whether infinity pools are really appropriate. I know they can have a pool, maybe they can put it somewhere else and not have an infinity edge on it. The other thing I would say is, let me talk about landscaping for a minute. So I think, I hate to get ahead of you, but if you are considering it's, you know, if it becomes, comes down to you approving this project, I think it should be heavily conditioned. And it would include, and this will be my main concern, every time we've seen this at the Association, landscaping has been one of the absolute top issues. And that is, how are you going to put that much mature landscaping on that site? And hiding this project with landscaping is going to be incredibly critical for the community in terms of its visibility and its acceptability to the community. So I would urge you to really focus on landscaping. Couple of thoughts I had is, and I didn't realize that performance bonds were, were part of county policy, which I strongly urge. The other thing is, is check the budget. The other thing is, is check the budget, make sure they're really going to spend that much money, and that those big, big trees, which are going to be required, are going to work on that site. The other thing is, getting back to the road for a minute, would be that the road needs more help. Olive trees, frankly, are not very dense trees. They, they aren't really great for screening. And I love olive trees, but they may not be all that appropriate to try to hide that road, you know, from the community for many, many years to come. I can't imagine how long it's going to take to hide that thing, if ever. That's basically it. Just a couple of things real quick. I know I'm out of time. Looking ahead, and I think that's an important thing to talk about, okay? Some kind of house is going to be built on this site. I won't try to prognosticate what it is, but we've got a problem here. Okay? What are we going to do the next time this, a project comes up in the Montecito foothills? How are we going to handle it? I think no piecemeal applications, comprehensive development plans only, no piecemealing, no driveway with an 800-square-foot guest house. Take a look at the whole project. Let's make an informed, comprehensive decision. And I was very happy to hear that the process is moving forward, as Diane said, to make this, to make the ordinance amendments where all hillside projects come to the planning commission for final approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No question?
I think you answered it.
Okay.
They know it's coming.
They know it's coming.
Mr. Collector.
I know you're thrilled that I'm the final speaker. I'm sure everybody's thrilled. And I've had seven calls from home, so I'm in trouble. At any rate, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Robert Collector. I'm speaking both as a Montecitan and as a former president of the Association Chair of Land Use, who's, who has seen this project. So, it's something that I'm familiar with. I've also visited the site. I want to begin by saying what I think is the most important thing about today, amplifying on Commissioner Tilcher's remarks. This is, I think, an historic day. How lucky are we as Montecitans that we have a body like you, stakeholders, friends, neighbors, whereby we can come and seek redress about something as important as local control of our land use? We are incredibly lucky. I, from my experience, going back in the beginning of the MPC, also feel that you're at a critical time where there were growing pains, staff changes, the commission changes, problems happened because of working out kinks between communication, MPC, staff, and the Board of Architectural Review. There were problems that happened because of those synapses. We all, as a community body, have been working to make this all much more cohesive. And I think right now, this critical issue is maybe an issue that happened because of those, that lack of cohesion, that only time would build into what will be the future. I think this is an opportunity for you to render an opinion as the ultimate decision-maker on something that has to do with Montecito forever. You are the ultimate arbiters on this, not staff, you. I think it's just, it's a perfect opportunity to put in place what all the other speakers have articulated that I'm not going to be redundant about. I think if you read the plan, the plan is very consistent. The plan even calls out by name the area of Mountain Drive and Bella Vista as specific habitat. The plan is clear. I think that the process that Bob Easton talks about where he was unclear, I don't, I don't really see that. I think that, Mr. Easton, people had to have known that this was nearly unbuildable property. If you can buy 38 acres for $550,000, there's a reason why. Lots of people downzoned, zoned in '92 for fairness. I think this, although it's not adjudicable, there's a fairness issue. But basically, I think that, and I say this with great respect to the, the people involved and their talents, but this is a lot of lipstick on a pig. For years now, we have had this project battering this plan, words and hours and staff time and community time, in great expense, because, in my opinion, I felt it when I was on the Association and now, it didn't belong there. It was clear. I think we can all say that we have spent tons of staff time and had community heartache on projects that strain the interpretation of the plan when the plan is clear. I think that if you go ahead and find against the appeal, what will happen in the future will be, this will be the LaGore interpretation of the Res. 40 district. I think it's inevitable. It will be this determination, whereupon, whereas it should be your determination that you simply look back, you have the opportunity, which Congress and the Supreme Court don't, of questioning the founders of the original document. The founders of our original document are clear. This is clear. There is no one determinant FARs or height that says that you are entitled to build. All of the guidelines, the metrics, don't equal entitlement to apply them all to the max. You need to look at them all, look at the site, use good judgment. I think we can all say that if you have to rip up a hillside to put a driveway there, the driveway shouldn't be there. You shouldn't be able to see a driveway from Google Earth and then try to back your way into justifying why it's there. Finally, I know I'm about out of time. I would ask you, over the years, what I have seen, and this is, once again, no disrespect to staff or Ms. Black, I have observed, as a Montecito Association officer, that the commissioners have wanted, have had a position, and they've wanted staff to give them the findings to make their determination. And the staff has fought them over interpretation. I would say this, I would submit this. You have the findings to, to approve this appeal. You have it. Direct the staff to give you what you want. Don't play defense. You're not in the risk management business. Go ahead because this is, this is a situation. If, that the decision that you make on this, for the rest of your life, we can all run, but we can't hide. This is perpetual and historic. I do think that all the work that G-PAC did and our founders have given you the tools today to support the, the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the time period for public comment. I'm going to close the public comment period. I'm not sure on the, when we have an appeal, does the appellant go last, or does the applicant go last?
Mr. Chair, I think we typically go in this same order, the appellant first and then the applicant as they presented. But if I could just make one comment, because they may want to comment on, on this. And it's something that I think you've heard both sides of in the testimony today, and I just wanted you to know what we think from a staff perspective. You heard Mr. Candy indicate that they met the FAR requirement, and therefore they're essentially entitled to this. And you've heard others say, "No, that's a maximum, and you have discretion." And I just want you to know that you have a lot of discretion on the house size. The table that I think is being referred to is Table 2 in the Hillside Mon section of the design guidelines, and it indicates that the recommended maximum house net floor area should follow that table. So, I just thought it was important because I think you've sort of heard both sides of, of that story. And I know you've heard this from us before, but I wanted to set that.
I appreciate you saying that, although I think we all feel that we have that discretion. It's just figuring out where the line is, is the hard part. With that said, the appellant, it's your opportunity to rebut any of the items you've heard.
I think it's been represented that, that after this property was purchased, and after the driveway went up, it was actually determined that, looked at the site to figure out where it'd be the best place to put the house. And I'm going to give you just a quick handout, and then I'm done. But what it shows is that 1999, when the property was purchased, a geotechnical study was commissioned. And on that study, it showed exactly where these two houses, both the 2480 and 2490, were going to be positioned on the property. It didn't happen later on, and I submit that, that the applicants have never really looked at tucking that house into the hillside without a guest house and trying to have it really be inconspicuous and it still have fabulous views. It just shows the date, and on the second page, it shows the map where those two lots would be. Thank you.
Katie.
Yes. I think I failed to greet you when I started, so I hope it's not too late. I do appreciate your time. I realize it's been a very long day. It's been a very long process. I just have a few things I want to say. And, you know, it was, everybody's been so eloquent in what they've had to say. It's hard to think of something new that will make a difference with you. But the 6,998 square feet that is allowed by these rules and regulations is subject to the constraints of the site. I'm hoping that you will remember that when you discuss it now. It isn't just that it's allowed. It's that it's, as I understand it, it's allowed, subject to the site, subject to the pad. And if it's limited development, it looks like the only thing limited is the size of the pad. You know, the mountains are not just a community, they're a regional asset. We spent six years looking for the perfect place to live, and it turned out to be Montecito. And one of the reasons was because of the ambiance of these foothills. I don't know that there's another community on the entire planet that has the beauty and ambiance that we get to live with every day. Please, please, the community is begging you, you, the people that are standing between us and the desecration of the mountains, please, please, support our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, please. Final words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three things. One is, the, the geology of the site has been raised as a, as a significant issue several times here. We'd like our geologist, who is here, to speak to, to that. Secondly, Mr. Candy will make a, a comment on the policy. And finally, I'll wrap up with a very brief comment. Mr. Simmons. Now, do we have a site plan that the staff can put up? Because our system is down. Thank you. This is Adam Simmons, our geologist.
Is there, is there one that has, oh, well, that's all right. My name's Adam Simmons. I'm a engineering geologist working on the project and also a hydrogeologist. And I've worked on numerous projects in this area, including the, oh, thank you, including the hillside that was shown to the west with the erosion and drainage problems on that slope there. And in fact, I was asked to look at that and provided the recommendations to redo the drainage and landscaping for that area, which is underway right now. And believe me, that's much more challenging than this particular lot here. So, I just wanted to put that thought in your head there, too, that, that both sides, I think, are addressing that issue of poor drainage. And right now, we have an empty lot up here right now, except for the driveway, but it's all set up to collect the water from this and not allow the water to sheet off of the, the hillside as it's shown on the property to the west. But in this particular case, there was a discussion about the retaining wall and the use of the wall to keep the drainage from spilling over the edge. That's very important on the hillsides, as everybody would, that has lived or does live on hillsides would realize that's very important. But two, there's a discussion about the, about the sandstone versus shale, and, and, you know, can we push the house back towards this shale zone? Because the shale's everywhere on the property. But in reality, it's not really quite that simple. This shale zone that does run through this area between the guest house and the main residence is a very, very soft shale. And it's not the, the same type of shale that runs through this section. There's a couple of little bands of shale that run through the main portion of the ridge, but the ridge is sandwiched between these very hard sandstones and conglomerates that support the shale here. And the reason that you can see it, not necessarily on this one, but there's a profile of the ridge that shows basically a hump and then back up to the, to the ridge line and then back up to the, to the guest house site. So, there's a saddle that everyone keeps referring to. Well, that saddle is there for a reason. It's, it's so soft and erodible. That's why the saddle's there to begin with. You don't see a saddle in this particular section of the, of the property because it's much more resistant, harder bedrock. So, the thought of pushing a home back into the shale, the soft shale, to me, would be crazy. I mean, I don't know how many geologists would appreciate building in a soft shale zone like that. It wouldn't be advisable. You'd have, even if you went with caissons, which you plan on doing in some of these outer areas anyways, you could have a lot of exposed footings and caissons, which would be more publicly frowned upon, in my opinion. So, you'd end up with a, a house that's on firmer materials, and that's exactly what you want. And that's what I'd want if this was my property. And I look at every property as if this was my place. Where would I build my house on this ridge? I'd build it in the competent sandstones. I wouldn't even mess around in the shales. It just wouldn't be worth it. So, to push it back up in there, it just, it wouldn't, you'd be looking at a closet, if one thing, maybe a hallway or something like that. But, but that wouldn't provide enough room for a residence. And then as far as the, the question about the oak trees and the sandstone, if anybody's ever hiked in the foothill areas, you see the grass areas at St. Hollister Ranch. It's very grassy. And then that's the shale. And as soon as you hit the sandstones, that's where the, the oak trees are, the sage and oak trees. And so, they love the, the sandstone. That's where they grow. And then there was a discussion about the development of other ridges in the hillside up above this. I know that there's a lot of properties that are, in my opinion, undevelopable because of the geology. May not be, there may be flat spots that are less than 30% slope, but getting to those flat spots could be challenging, if not impossible, from a geologic perspective. Whereas this one was carefully analyzed and found that, yes, we have the hard rock there, and it's supportive for the access. And so, that's why this house is sitting where, or the proposed house is sitting where it is right now. And believe me, from a geologic perspective, I'd prefer that you were sitting here than pushing back here, because you're getting closer to that shale. But it just means a little bit more thought process in this particular area right here, as far as caissons and walls to support that, that area. But anyways, I think I'm out of time here. But if there's any questions?
Commissioner Gottsinger?
Yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
I live in a very similar geological situation, so I can pretty much understand what you're saying. But the question I have is, could the saddle be built on? Or is that shale so shaly? I mean, I know there's more of that shale up on Gibraltar Road, very close to my property. And, you know, that shale just keeps coming and coming and coming and has been coming for at least 30 years, to my knowledge. So, I, the question really for me is, like, is it even possible to ever even get caissons down deep enough to stop that, to do anything about that?
Actually, you know, you can pretty much do anything if you spent a lot of money on it. I think, you know, we could build a bridge probably from here to the Santa Cruz Island. But, but in this particular spot here, it wouldn't, I personally, as a geologist, wouldn't allow them to do that. They'd have to hire somebody else. I'm not sure who would be willing to.
Well, and we also, we also have, you know, I mean, we've heard tons of, tons of reference to the community plan. to the community plan. We actually do have policies in the geology section of the community plan that disallow building on highly erosive soil. So would this be a highly erosive soil?
It's very erosive and expansive. That's why it's a saddle. And I'd worked with.
No, I got that.
Okay.
I have a saddle. I have a saddle, too.
It's a bad shale and it's a wide shale, so that's why it makes it very difficult to build anything right on it.
Okay, thank you.
And I've also been told that it wouldn't be approved by the Santa Barbara County consultant, which is FUGO, I believe, at this point in time. But that may or may not be the case, but that's, that's very possible.
Commissioner Burrows?
Regarding the placement of the guest house, is that being built on shale? Or is it behind the guest house?
Actually, it's like a violin where they have sandstone that's, that's actually sandstone along here. The sandstone bands run this way and this way, and they're very hard sandstone. That's why this is a prominent ridge right here, a point. But the soft shale where the saddle is, is running through here. And the purpose of the guest house at this location was to be placed on that firm sandstone. So if you looked at the building envelope, it squeezes in and comes out and squeezes in again and around this. And the reason being is the soft zone is the area that would be vulnerable to any type of movement or landsides or erosion, whereas once the guest house is tucked into the sandstone here, that's where you want to be. If you're a homeowner and you have a choice between shale and sandstone, pick the sandstone because that's the stuff that's going to hold your house up. But yes, it is in sandstone.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Peter Candy, I'd like to respond to comments that were focused at the land use rules applicable to the project. The Montecito architectural guidelines and development standards were adopted and are currently in place for the specific purpose of implementing the policies of the general plan and the zoning ordinance. These are the standards that must be applied to this project. These are the standards that your commission must use to determine the project's consistency with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Now, it's true that you have discretion to operate within the confines of the standards, but in questions of project consistency with the general plan and zoning ordinance, the maximum set forth in the standards control. Your commission is not at liberty, I'm sorry to say, to toss out the standards on the basis that members of the public have stepped forward and expressed their dissatisfaction with them. If the perception of the public is that the rules are inadequate to protect the visual and hillside resources, then the rules need to be changed. What I heard today was that the rules are inadequate. And the members of the public that got up and spoke in opposition to the project are singling this project out as an example of how the rules are inadequate. But until the rules are changed, applicants have the right to be processed and judged based on the rules that are in place. Any other approach results in a breakdown of law and essentially, government decisions start becoming arbitrary and capricious. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. Candy, just a second. Is it your position that the guidelines are an entitlement? Let's talk about 6,600 square feet on eight acres. Do you view that as an entitlement?
It is an entitlement when it comes down to a question of whether or not it's consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. The standards say that you're entitled on an eight acre parcel to 6,600 square feet. That is, per se, consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Otherwise, that standard wouldn't be in place. That standard has no purpose in the hierarchy of planning laws.
I see. Here we have, let's assume that's a half an acre. I don't even know. No one's mentioned the size of that pad. And there's an argument you're presenting that 6,600 square feet would be entitled there. If it was a sixteenth of an acre, would you still make that argument, that a house that size?
The standard state, for an eight acre parcel, you're entitled to 6,600.
Regardless of the size of the building pad?
I think what you're trying to address is site constraints. And that's where there's some discretion.
Okay.
That's where, if there's constraints on a site that you deem are inappropriate for 6,600 square feet, then there's some discretion. However, 6,600 is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance, so statements saying that, you know, it's too intensive, it's too much, it's not limited development, those don't stand up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This project has started with a denial from this commission a year ago. You've heard testimony that staff and the MBAR were ground down. I submit to you that when staff brought, when this came forward to you last January, staff stated, staff's position was recommending to you that this have a summary denial. Staff, in my experience, does not get ground down. They work every day as our servants and our guardians of the documents and of the planning that this community has and the county has. We worked hard with staff to respond to their concerns and finally, earned their support. After that, we went to MBAR and, again, they grind every week. These are our representatives and our professionals who put in their time every single week to work on these projects. And they did not just let this project go without putting their own imprimatur on it. So this project has earned a lot of support from the people who are most actively involved and really know these ordinances well. And finally, of course, as you, as you've heard, even the support from the Montecito Association was not unanimous by any means. So we have a project which we believe deserves your support and we request that you deny the appeal and support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So where we are now is questions, questions of staff. So I thought maybe we could get some questions of staff and then at some point take a couple minute break and come back for delivery. Oh, would you like to do it now?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, since it's been the recent topic, perhaps now's the time to get one thing out promptly. It has not been our advice that there is an entitlement to any given standard in our ordinances, so I must respectfully disagree with Mr. Candy. And with respect specifically to floor, net floor areas, those are specifically called out as recommended maximums, as I'm sure your commission is aware. So you do have, as Ms. Black indicated, the job before you of looking at each of the findings and determining whether, as to each of those findings, which reflect all the policies and ordinances, you can make those findings.
Thank you for reiterating that. I think at this point, we're probably used to the fact that there's various interpretations of everything and that we are the ultimate decision makers on how those should be interpreted. We certainly are looking forward to doing so in the next few minutes here. You did bring up the issue of bringing some of these items into the record, and I'm not sure if we have much. I see the materials lab report is one. That's not really a letter, it's more of a submission. And.
Is that two pages or one?
It's two pages I received. And then there's a three-page, the visual bulk exhibit.
So I move those be included in the record?
And I think those are the only things that we have that are over a page in length. Yeah, that's the one I was referring to, the lab report. So if somebody would make a, you made a motion, somebody's motion and second to bring these, include these into the record. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Aye. Pass is unanimous. So we've got our housekeeping out of the way now. Questions of staff? Commissioner Burrows, you had your light on first, so I'll let you take a first run at it.
Thank you. I would like to ask staff, how much authority do we have to condition our decision today?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, I'll start and maybe Mr. Allen will want to augment this. You're really sitting in the position of staff and the Montecito BAR in the context of these decisions. They are ministerial permits or staff-level permits, not subject to sequo, so I think you just need to be careful about conditioning.
That was short and sweet. Be careful.
But that doesn't.
Commissioner Gottsinger.
Excuse me. But that doesn't stop us, I guess there was another word I was going, wanted to use. But that doesn't necessarily stop us from making recommendations back to MBAR as this project moves forward. Is that accurate? I mean, this is, I mean, it's only gone, well, that would depend on which direction the appeal went, huh?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the clearest thing you can do is to say yes or no on both appeals. That's absolutely the clearest thing. And if you were to say no, I think it's perfectly acceptable to say, here are the reasons we said no and here's how you could cure it. I think if you say yes, you need to be careful about attaching a lot of requirements to yes. That doesn't mean you can't do anything, but I think you can cross a line where there's an argument that you're no longer in a ministerial context.
Expand on the ministerial and how that fits into what we're, how we sit today. I assume this was du novo, which means we can, basically, we're hearing this as the decision maker and can.
As the decision maker at the same level that the decision was made. So you're bound to the same findings and the same discretion that your staff and the Montecito BAR had.
Okay, so we're at that, we have to look at it from that level. Okay, thank you. Any more questions of staff? I'd suggest we take a five-minute break and, actually, if there's no more, you do have another question. Because I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing as soon as we're.
Okay. It relates to landscaping. In reading the documents, even though you say the project is going to be served by the Montecito Water, is there an existent can and will serve letter from Montecito Water? I didn't see it, I'm just.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Rourke, there is.
Did that reflect any potential constraints on the water supply for landscaping?
Not to my knowledge. The letter was submitted quite a while ago. I know that the Montecito Water District has some new standards, but we haven't received an update letter.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's the end of our presentations, testimony and questions, so I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute break. Let's back into session for the deliberation and motions on our third item today, the LaGuerre appeal, excuse me, Patterson appeal of the LaGuerre single-family residence. And normally, what we do at this time, since we've finished all our question and answer session, is it's an opportunity for each of the commissioners to say how they feel about the material that's been presented and maybe articulate their position or at least start to articulate their positions. So Commissioner Gottsinger, I'm going to start with you and let you articulate, if you dare.
Thanks a lot. All these things are sort of being seriously. Keep your mic on. Mic. There we go. Well, the first thing I'm going to say is that there has been a lot of reference to this project being precedent-setting. And I do not agree with those. I think the precedent was set on a number of structures that are in that neighborhood and our entire, along the whole foothills, that personally, I feel, we didn't do our job. I don't think the Montecito Association did their job. I don't think the staff. I just don't think we did our job on those. And now, this becomes sort of like the turning point, not the precedent, but the turning point in how we're going to view other projects. Now, there's been a number of numbers thrown out and as to, like, what it really could possibly look like if we just let this keep going and going and going and don't get a handle on it. When we had our briefing, there was a map that was presented to the commission, and it's this map, okay? And it has all of the properties that exist in the R and Z zone. And it was a map that was prepared by June Pujot and it's got all the property owners on there. So what I did is I sat down and got into some APN numbers and ownership numbers and did a little homework because I really wanted to know for myself what the concern was for the future. And this is what I came up with. Up there in this area here, on this map, the green is the undeveloped. Oh, there it is, it's up there. The green is the undeveloped, the red is the developed. So up there in the Resource Management Zone District, we have 35 government-owned lots, 35 lots owned by either the US government, Santa Barbara City Schools, the City of Santa Barbara, the Montecito Water District. At the present time of those 35 lots, none of them are accessible from a public road. In other words, how do you get to all those, that 9,795 acres that is in, that belongs to the government? In fact, you can't. The reality is, you can't get there. So how are you going to develop those lots? You're not going to develop those lots. Of the private lots in that area, there are 25 privately-owned lots, still with no access from a public road. They don't even, but a public road. You know, you'd have to go up and over and over and over to get to where those lots are because many of those lots are buried in the middle of all of that. So what we really have remaining, what we really have remaining, in my opinion, in this community as far as Hills Resource Management Zone District lots are, we have five lots owned by the tea gardens. That has a road that we can get to, that we're going to have to look at. We have four privately-owned lots at the top of what would be Hot Springs Road. You can keep going up Hot Springs Road to four more private lots up there that potentially could be developed. And we have five more lots in the Bella Vista area. So as a total, we have 24 lots that, in private ownership, that can be accessed in that entire area. That's what we've got. Now, all of those lots, let's be really clear, all of those lots are all way down here at the bottom. They're all way down there, right at the edge. They are, in fact, the area that we, as a community, chose to limit development on. And how we limited development on those lots was we limit, when we downzoned, we limited the potential for subdividing and creating other lots. That's what we did. We limited the potential for development. It happened in my, it happened to me. You know, I had a potential for three one-acre lots. When it was downzoned, I wound up with a three-acre lot. The potential for development got limited throughout that whole area. Now, when we did that, a kind of funny thing happened because it's really a band across there. And that's when we, as a community, began to look at, like, okay, how there, and that's when we, as a community, began to look at like, okay, how do we really deal with these? Because it's not just open space. It's accessible by roads, how do we deal with it? And we came up with development standards. That's what we came, because that was the mechanism for trying to control what was going to happen in this thin band, which had now entered RMZ. Wasn't before, wasn't before, actually, before the line was in '95, before the line was moved down, there were no standards there. Anything could have been built. It didn't even belong to the RMZ until we rezoned it. You know, so I just, I really tried to go back and do a whole lot of homework on, so I could actually kind of get a handle on this. So, and that's what I found out, and I just found it kind of interesting that, you know, I, so, then we get on to, you know, a number of issues that have been brought up today. And one of the issues that's been brought up today is the fact that there was, there was a, there was this small house proposed, and the road was connected to that. Well, actually, in the community plan, that's what it says they have to do. You can't get a road unless you've got a permit to build a house. And that's what they did. And as interesting is that I actually was on MBAR when this project came before, I was chairman of MBAR, when the road and the 800-square-foot guesthouse was approved by MBAR and then permitted by staff. And let's be very clear, there was no subterfuge. Both the applicant and the architect, when asked, what is your intention, they said, our intention is to build a larger house, but we need to get a road up there, and so we're applying for the 800-square-foot guesthouse. That's why we're doing it. We're not, you know, in my opinion, they didn't hide anything. We knew when this original permit was granted that their intention was to build another house there. You know, I find it, continue to find it interesting that everybody seems to think that just by pushing the house back to the location of the guesthouse, that it's going to be less visible. That doesn't, I don't see how you think that's going to happen. Maybe less visible from Bella Vista, as you're looking up, but from the community, from the 10,000 people that Mr. Tadasco referred to, not a chance. It's going to be just as visible or more visible because of the amount of space that you've got to put a house. It's going to have to be a two-story house if it climbs up that hill. There's no other way to build it unless it's a two-story house. You know, we now have a house that I believe is, what's the max? Is it 18, the maximum ridge on this house?
It's 16.
It's 16, excuse me. Okay, yeah, so it's 16 right now, okay? Boy, if every --
It's 18.
18, excuse me. If every house in our hillsides that we've allowed to be built were 18 feet high, I don't think we'd be here right now. You know, I really don't, you know. Why would we? You know? I mean, they would all just be kind of shelved in there, and they'd be this whole, you know? So there's all of that, and let me see if there's anything else I want to say here. Oh, there is something, you know, and I really, I do appreciate the applicant's lawyer laying out the hierarchy of land use, as he did. He saved me like two and a half pages of written material that I had, that I came up with the same thing. And one of, one of the things in the community plan says that the architectural guidelines and development standards shall establish clear and objective standards for both, for the review of both the applicant and the Board of Architectural Review. So we have standards, and these are a combination of height limitation, structural setbacks, and other standards related to size, bulk scale of residential units. Well, we did that. We developed standards, clear and objective standards. It went through a huge process. It went through an incredible EIR document that says these standards are clear and objective, you know? And so for me, I have to judge this project inside those standards, not inside the intent of the community plan, because I believe that the intent of the community plan was for us to develop those standards, was for us to limit the potential for multiple lot splits and subdivisions in the hillsides. And I think that all happened. I think we did that. I think we followed the direction of the community plan, and we did that. And I think that's all I'm going to say right now. Yeah, well, there's just one more. You know, it does say in the community plan that the development standards contained in this plan shall be utilized to implement the policies of the plan. That's what it says. The development standards in the, in here, that's how we implement the goals and policies of the plan. So that's, I kind of, I think you probably can get the direction that I'm going in, is that I intend to look at this project, given the development standards that we've got and the findings that we have to make, and whether it meets those development standards and whether I can make those findings.
Commissioner Gottsenger, I have a question for you, because I know you took a lot, a look at a lot of the policies. How did the issue of detached guesthouses come into the analysis of the development in the hillside and RES 40? Did you find anything on that in any of your analysis?
Nope.
Because I didn't see anything.
No, it's, no, it's allowed by the zone district.
Right.
When we zoned this MA 40 or RMZ 40, we then said that this is what's allowed. So we said, a house and a guesthouse are allowed, and that's considered to be limited residential development.
Fine.
Now, the size, that's a whole other issue.
I understand. Just curious as to whether that --
No, but the zone district allows that.
Because there were, there were some other changes related to accessory structures, and I wondered if, if the guesthouse issue had been examined in detail in and of itself.
Not so far as I could find in any of the documentation.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Oberol.
Can you finish that?
Yes, I think so. At this point, I might come up with something later on, but I'll let you go.
I'd like to make a few comments on some specifics and then respond to a couple of things that Commissioner Gottsenger just said. I guess the first thing would be to just realize that this project comes with a considerable history. And without going through all the details of the amendments to the ordinance to allow the pool and the tanks and all that, I can't help but be impacted by the realization that you have to come to the conclusion that somewhere along the line, the intent and the purpose of the RMZ, it shouldn't have taken this long for the MBAR to arrive at a decision. It shouldn't have had to come here on what, this is the second appeal, or third appeal, whatever it is. Clearly, there's a problem with the process, and hopefully, in our January meeting, we're going to begin to address that. I personally think had we had before us the entire project, as you have, have now with the guesthouse and the pool and the road and all that, I think we might very well not have, have come to the spot that we are with the road in. I think the piecemeal approach has been a problem for everybody, applicant as well as the community, as well as this board. So I'm glad that we're addressing the process, part of it for sure. As to the specifics, when I, when I looked at the purpose and the intent, nowhere in the code does it indicate that somebody is, in my reading of it, that somebody is entitled to X number of square feet or a guesthouse or a pool. Those are all permitted uses, but they're not necess, they're all allowed uses, but they're not, this doesn't mean that you get them. It seemed to me there's an overriding principle which says the project has to fit the site. And I think, from my perspective, I see, it comes up in the visual resources, it comes up in the minimize, cut, and fill requirements. There's a lot of alteration to the site that's required in order to fit a house this size on it. And so I can't help but come to the, you know, the thought goes through my mind, is this, is this a case where the house fits the site, or is this a case where the site is being altered substantially to accommodate a larger house? And I, I'll delay my conclusion on that, but there are things, the nine-foot cut on the knoll, the pushing out of the, of the grated material, you've got 450 feet, that's one and a half football fields of retaining wall around it. I'm, I'm very concerned about the landscaping requirement. Mr. Mafus gave us a budget for landscaping this. I live on a parcel that my wife and I built a home on. It's different in configuration. It happens to be in the same zone. It's about the same size. And we spent a great deal more on landscaping for a parcel that is not nearly as prominent, you can't be seen from anywhere, and tends to be a little flatter in the lower part, a great deal more than the budget that you have indicated your owner has looked at. So I, I'm really concerned when I hear those kinds of things without details being nailed down, because when I, when I look at this, without the landscaping, if it is substantially different than that, what goes from a, perhaps really stretching it, a marginally acceptable project, goes to a totally unacceptable project for me. So that's where I am for right now, and to be continued.
Well, now, one of the advantages of being chair is I get to go last. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank all of you on both sides of this issue for spending so much time here, for addressing the issues that are important to you. And I think that we all share one goal, and that is to protect the hillsides. And we have to do the best we can with the material that we have been given. Given that a legal lot is entitled to a home of one kind or another, we want to have the best home, and I think this is a beautiful home, although I might choose a different style, and many of us might have done that. I have to look at this project and say that the staff report indicates that this is consistent with not only the comprehensive plan, the Monacito Community Plan, the architectural guidelines. We have addressed the safety issues with the fire department. And in regard to the square footage, eight and a half acres, we have a 4,000, approximately 4,000-foot home proposed when they are entitled to over 6,000. There are some changes that I would like to, to propose, and I don't know if staff can help us craft this, or if my fellow commissioners would even be interested. I would like to explore if the applicant would be interested in giving up the, the guesthouse, and perhaps move the home back into the area where the guesthouse now stand, is now proposed. And I will have more comments later, but that's where I am now.
Commissioner Phillips.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think. I, I, it's, I think it's very difficult to read the zoning ordinance and the overlay and the community plan and the comprehensive's plan without, without coming to the conclusion that the language is, is purposely vague and requires a subjective discretionary decision on our part. And I think, in the wisdom of our founding fathers, I, sorry, Dick, you're included in that, you know, that's, that's an awful term, and fathers and mothers, I guess, the, it was vague, and we have discretion because the community changes. It may be, it may come, it, there may be a day in the future where whatever this decision is today will be looked at and just, people won't be able to understand it. But right now, it seems to me that the intent of the community and this zoning provision is to not permit the otherwise acceptable, perfectly-designed, attractive, appropriately-sized, bulk-scaled home in this district. I think the community was looking for something else, something less. And I don't think there is one appropriate size, nor do I think we can look at 6,600 square foot, feet, and eight acres as controlling. We don't have eight acres. We have, I don't know how big this pad is, but that's what we have. We don't have any more than that. If that pad was a little bit smaller, you couldn't even physically put 6,600 square feet on there. So it has to be that we have this discretion, and I think, I think I agree with Claire that there is no precedent here. I think all of these lots are going to be difficult as we go forward, and, you know, my hope is that we can find something on some lots so that we're not engaged in a taking. It's going to be very hard, I think. I think, I think, I think we need a new design. I think the community wants something different up there, and I'm moving in that direction.
Commissioner Gottsenger.
So, Commissioner Phillips. Wrong, went the wrong way. When you say a new design, you're saying a new design of the building, or a new design of the ordinances, or what were you referring, I'm sorry, I got lost there.
A new, good question. A new design of the building, and I don't speak architecture, but I'm, I can't prove it, but I'm convinced there's, there's a building struct, form that would accomplish the owner's goal and satisfy the community. I don't think it's this type of traditional Monacito big house. I think it has to be something else.
So you're sort of harking back to the presentations that were done by the MBAR members into like alternative building styles, and remember, we had that, is that what you --
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I just feel that if we're going to go in that direction, that we, as a community, have not give, you know, given this has been in the process as long as it has, you know, MBAR didn't give clear direction, we didn't give clear direction the last time it was through, and now here we are back again. So what, what are we going to, I mean, what clear direction, if we're going to say redesign the building, what are we going to say? Redesign it to look like what? Build it out of what materials? How high should it be? How wide should it be? How, whatever? You know, we can't just say, okay, go to design it again. This is like the, I think it may be the third, it may even be the fourth redesign of this project.
Well, I, I think we can say that.
So it's like, how many, without direction, how can we say that?
I think we can say that. And I think we can also be very specific, but I don't know, and I think we can, in a de novo hearing, I'm sure we can. I don't know if we can do it today, but whatever this design is, it should, it should enhance the, it should get closer to the intent of these ordinances. It has to somehow not be as visible and as prominent. And I absolutely agree with you. This design team has done a great job, and it's, we're very fortunate in this community to have the professionals like you guys to, to bring things forward. I can imagine how awful it would be without your professionalism, but I think you got it wrong. I think, I think I would like to live in your house, Mr. Easton, right now, but I don't think the community wants to see it, and I don't know where that line is, and it's like that terrible Supreme Court case where you know it when you see it. And if, and if that's unfair, then we could probably work this out up here, but anyway, that's -- But anyway, that's where I am now.
So you're, so your concern more is with the, I'm, I'm, all I'm going to, I'm just going to ask questions.
Let me take a shot at it first.
Okay, fine. It's just, I just want to know where we're going.
Just so we have all our opinions out here on the table. And, and I'll start up. You, you raised an interesting point about the community evolving, and not only does the community evolve, and I think that's one of the things that we get to, that's why there's a little wiggle room in these interpretations, and I think we do have the ability to do that. But I think the policies themselves are pretty clear. And where the wiggle room comes in is, how do we interpret them, given what we have in front of us today? And I have really struggled with this, as I know we all have, because of the length of time that this process has gone on. Because it's been a tremendous amount of time, and I actually think that the house that's in front of us today is quite a lovely house.
Sure.
And, and has dealt with the site. In some respects, when I look at the difference between the, the plan that we saw nine months ago, or 10 months ago, and this one, it's, it's really a, a much, much better plan. But I also feel that they're not there yet. And I'm going to support the appeal on this item. And the reason I'm going to do so is because of, I don't think they've met the criteria on a couple of the policies. And in particular, the hillside protection, hillside and watershed protection policy said, "All development shall be designed to fit the site and be oriented so that the grading and other site preparation is kept to an absolute minimum." And the other one is on the visual resource policy. It says that "Structures shall be subordinate in appearance to the natural landform and designed to follow the natural contours of the landscape and shall be sited so as not to intrude into the skyline." You know, when it sits on a knoll, it intrudes into the skyline. It doesn't have to be at the top of the ridge to intrude into the skyline. And I think because of that, because of the nature of where they decided to site the house, they put, they gave themselves an additional burden. And I'll, I'll say my position has evolved some on this, because, well, it has, just because we've, we've learned a lot in the process of, of dealing with this particular site. But I wouldn't, I'll, I'll tell you the things that I think they've got right. I, I don't find the size of the house objectionable. And I don't find the location of the house objectionable. Yes, I think that could be tweaked a little bit, but I could probably still support it. What I have trouble with is, is some of the things around the, to make those findings of maximum extent feasible and absolute minimum, I don't think you can have 450 feet of retaining wall around the edge of a property. And I don't think you can have an infinity pool. And I don't think you can have, I don't think you can have fill to use to landscape around your house to make it a nice yard around the outside. That's a wonderful thing, that's what I would want if it was mine, but it doesn't meet the criteria of maximum extent feasible or absolute minimum. I just can't get there. And I don't think we should hit, sit here today and try to say what does meet that. I don't think we can do that. And so I would suggest that we simply unanimously, if we can, uphold the, grant the appeal on this and send it back.
Mr. Chair.
Forward, whatever. Forward. It will prob, well, I was, it may go forward, but that's not our decision.
Mr. Chair, just for, procedurally, what you have before you is a staff recommendation for approval, so I think we would need to continue this to your next hearing for the appropriate findings.
And that's what I, I'm, I'm just stating where we would get to in our next meeting, but I'm suggesting that we, that we entertain a motion for, for conceptual denial of this and bring it back next time with the findings. And I would suggest the findings are based on those two policies not being met, and, and I'll say, I'm not going to ask them to move the house off the knoll. I think that, I think that's probably the spot. You know, there's a question as to whether a guest house is appropriate here. I'm sort of on the fence on that one. But I can't get there on the fill, the retaining wall, or the infinity pool. So.
Would you like a motion?
I'd love a motion.
Okay. I would move that we support the.
Conceptual support.
Conceptual support of the appeal, and that the staff come, we continue the hearing till the next, till February, or January, rather, and that staff come back with the findings to support our position. I may have butchered that a little bit, but I think you got the idea.
I think we got it. Is there a, is there a second, or is there further discussion?
Oh, I had a question. Does your motion address the infinity pool and the retaining walls?
No.
I mean, how does that fit in here?
I don't think so. I, I just wanted to give the applicant an idea of, you know, I don't think this is go back and start from zero. I'm just giving the ones that I can't make the findings on, personally.
Mr. Chair, after your motion is, is seconded, I think it would be helpful to hear from the commission as a whole as to what they would like to see in the findings. And I think that the items you've mentioned are certainly important factors to include in the findings, and I don't know if the commission wants anything else in this.
Right. Mr. Chair.
But you need a second before.
I understand.
Mr. Chair, before we second, aren't we presupposing that indeed the applicant owners want to come back?
I don't know if they do. That's their decision, that's not ours.
We, we have an appeal that, that we're either going to approve or not approve. I would like to give direction, but I, I don't know if we're.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I'm not asking you to give direction to the applicant as to how to redesign their project per se. What I'm asking you is to give direction on the findings, which are kind of this, which provides some information, I think, that's helpful to the applicant.
Which is why I tried to mention the two, the two policies, the hillside policy and the, and the visual policy, as being two that I can't make the findings related to.
Okay.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second, maybe we ought to do a roll call on this one? No?
Hang on.
Oh, you want more information first?
If there are, I, you know, we are going to be coming back to your commission, assuming that this motion passes with revised findings next month to support your action. And so it would be very helpful for us to make sure we include whatever it is the commission would like included in those findings. So if there's any other direction before you vote, I think it would be helpful to incorporate.
I know Commissioner Overall has copious notes, but the other question I have, if the applicant decided that they did want to tweak some of these, is there a mechanism for them to do so with, without us? You know, to give us some leeway to bring this thing back?
Um.
I mean, they may not want to do.
Mr. Chair.
They may simply want to continue forward.
Yes, I mean, I think a, a fairly common thing that, or a common occurrence when conceptual motions are taken is that applicants try to address the concerns that are expressed by the commission in the, in the context of findings. I don't know if that will happen in this case or not.
I'm just wondering whether, whether we're kind of locked in at the next meeting to, to.
It's conceptual motions, you have not made a final decision.
We've still not made a final decision. So if the applicant wanted to come back at the next meeting and say, we're willing to adjust these things, we could reconsider and make the appropriate.
If, Mr. Chair, if they, if they decided to submit a revised project for your review and for our review.
Right.
We may or may not be able to look at that at the next meeting, but.
I understand. It didn't necessarily mean the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, and just to be a little more specific before your vote, if the vote is to conceptually support the denial, if there are any other policies or any other findings that you cannot make, if you could identify those specifically, I know it would be helpful to staff so that when they come back with findings, they can indicate each of them and the.
I mean, I've gone through, I don't think I can do better than the two, the visual resource policy two and the hillside water check protection, protection policies one and two. Those were really my two, two hot-button issues on the, the findings. But my fellow commissioners may have some other.
I, I must be missing something. It seems to me we have this appeal and we're granting the appeal. The findings have been made and the appellant's.
No, we don't have the findings before us to.
Mr. Chair, just, it's a de novo hearing, so you have to.
Oh, we have affirmative.
Make a decision on the appeal and on the permit. And you don't have findings to support a different action on the permit.
Could I suggest that we move to accept the appeal because the required visual resources site design and alteration of topography requirements have not been met?
I, I think that's already in the.
We're going to let the staff write that for us.
Right. It's just if, if there's any other policies.
Oh, beyond those?
Beyond those two.
Okay. Mr. Chair, just to be clear, on the hillside and watershed protection policy number one, minimize the cut and fill. And you know what the position on that. The policy number two is the site preparation is kept to a minimum. Well, you've got an acre and a half of natural vegetation that is in the grading. You had the purpose and intent of the, of the RMC, whether, and whether or not it conforms to the intent to limit development. You had C, which is the visual resources policy number two, which is the projects to be subservient and compatible with the natural setting. Again, there's a lot of alteration being, taking place on the site, the flattening of the knoll and pushing out the contours, the horizontal contours. And then policy number two under there, natural contours, and it's cited so as not to intrude on the skyline. I think there's a feeling that from, certainly from the east and the west, it does. And somewhere in there, you had the, the other factors that we had, the retaining walls. I would add, just personally, I don't know where, exactly where it fits here, but I, I really want the applicant and us to, to focus on the adequacy of, and the practicality of the landscaping. There are some, if you want to take the time, there are some particular conditioning that exists in the, that you adopted. On, let's see, this is exhibit, attachment A, conditions of approval, under, on page four, which is, what is it, number four, item K. It says, "The restoration area shall be monitored and maintained for a period of at least three years after installation and planning shall be replaced and/or the plan be altered if criteria are not met." I would like to see that last part of that sentence struck. I think it's too easy to come back later and say, we can't meet this, and so we want to alter it, and we end up downgrading the mitigations that were approved. Item N there relates to the cost estimate. I'd like to have the applicant have a little bit more time to come back with, perhaps fleshed out a little bit more. I suppose I could go on, but that's probably enough to give you some guidance. Ms. Mafus, did you have a question?
Commissioner, Mr. Jack, Commissioner Overall, can you clarify again on M, what you wanted added to that one?
Yeah, it's just, it's the cost estimate, and actually, let's see, which one is this referring to? This is the restoration plan. I mean, if, if, if this were my site and I were going to, to build it, I'd sure as heck like to know what I was getting myself into, and I'd, I'd like us to have a sense of what the applicant is getting into. Is that clear?
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, I think what you're saying, because we won't be coming back with any revisions to conditions. What you're saying is, is that the lack of detail or some concerns about the conditions lead you to believe that the, there's some question about the effectiveness of landscaping. So we'll somehow weave that in.
Thank you. Let me ask a question of, of staff. Would, do you think it would be appropriate, actually of my fellow commissioners, you want to take any straw votes on some basic issues like location of the house and size of the house, just to give the applicant an idea, whether they want to consider redesign or whether it's not worth their efforts? Because I can support the house in its location and, and its size. Those are really don't concern me.
Mr. Chair, I, it just seems that with such a professional staff, they're going to come back with something better than we're going to think of it, sit 10 minutes of.
Well, the only reason I mention it is if, if the feeling of the, of the commission here is that the, the site of the knoll itself is not acceptable, I think they should know that now and not come back with a smaller house on that site. You know, if we're saying it has to be in the location of the guest house, I think we should tell them that right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
We should tell them that right now. So they don't have any mystery and don't come back with a, with a smaller house on this size, or change some of the landscaping, like I suggested, or retaining walls or infinity pools, and then have us say, nope, didn't get it right again.
In answer to your question, I'd, I'd be delighted to do that. But Sue may have had hers.
Yes, I do. As I stated earlier, I would be interested in exploring eliminating the guest house and pushing the house back to that area. I don't know if that, if my fellow commissioners are interested in that.
Well, I mean, are we just going to go down the line?
Yeah, I, I might as well.
Or do you want us to respond?
Why don't you, why don't you give us your, your take on it, Commissioner Gottsanger?
Well, if we're going, I mean, given you said what you said, and we're going in the direction that you said, I, I don't have any problem with the house sitting where the house sits either, nor do I have any problem with the size. And it's interesting, the two things that I was going to try to get in here around tweaking the project were exactly the same two, two things that you have, is, is, you know, I do have a problem with the length of the retaining walls. I think that those retaining walls could be designed as big mounds or chunks or some, some, some landforms that would not have it be this kind of.
Not the linear.
This linear quality. And the other one was to move the pool. Those, for me, those seem to be the two things that are really pushing the envelope on these project, on this project, is that, you know, I mean, and I'm always referring personally to my place, but, you know, I mean, I live on slopes like that, you know, and I just get little tiny flat areas. You know, that's my personal choice, but it's, you know, like a bulldozer's never touched my property. That's my personal choice. And so I've been able to manipulate the land, you know, so that I get some flat areas, but not an entire front yard up there on the top of the hill. And I think that that is part of the, you know, thing that's driving people's being not accepting this, you know.
Yes, so do I.
You know.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's a motion now and a second on grant of the appeal. And if your commission is done with discussing the direction to staff on the findings that staff is coming back with, might be preferable to act on that motion. And then if you individually have any suggestions for what Mayor Manotaker, you know, with the applicant's future direction on this project.
You've got, you've got enough to write the findings at this point, there's not an issue there. So maybe they're correct. Let's, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion.
I just have a question. Before we vote on the motion, could you please clarify just briefly the process if the motion passes?
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, if the motion passes, then we will, we staff will go back, draft findings for upholding the appeal and denying the permit, and we'll come back to the commission in January. And at that January meeting, you'll review those findings and, and take a, a final vote. And then, I don't know. Then the matter is certainly subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors.
Commissioner Phillips, you have your light on, did you? No. Roll call.
Commissioner Gottsanger?
No.
Commissioner Overall?
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
And Commissioner Big?
Yes.
So vote case for one.
Right.
Unless there's.
Individual comments you still can.
Yeah.
Yeah, about the pool or.
If, if you want to make any additional comments for the applicant as relates to, I think specifically the location of the house and size of the house, those are the two big ones. So.
Chair, I will offer a few comments. I will offer a few comments. The proximity of the patio design and the loggia to the edge of the hill, while I think it, we didn't actually get into the specifics of the plan. I don't know whether it's a 16-foot setback from the retaining wall or not. If it's not, I'd like to see what that looked like. I, I also feel that the pool ought to come off the edge. As it relates to the grading, you've got a lawn out front. Lawn is water intensive in its use. I'd like to see the lawn removed. Maybe the pool could go in that area. Perhaps that would help reduce some of the requirement for the grading. You currently have, as I read it, a three-car garage. Again, if we wanna reduce the grading and pull the retaining walls back in, it seems to me with the guest house, you have adequate parking on the site. If it were cut down to a two-car garage, then perhaps you could compact the, the building, moving it slightly from west toward the east. We've already talked about the retaining wall and the grading and the fill on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, it seems to me if the, the prohibition against excessive grading and fill might be to prevent this very thing from happening. If you don't do that, you can't build on it. So maybe that's what that's about. Maybe this has to be a much smaller house without that leveling.
Well, at least it may fit into the maximum, you know.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's, that's a hard judgment call, but I.
It's not eight acres. It's, it isn't.
For myself, I look at the, I don't think the location is, is controlling. I would prefer it in the back where the existing guest house is, but I don't think it has to be. But it's gonna be difficult for us to design a project sitting here today.
It is.
Mr. Chair, so just procedurally, and I guess this is a question for staff, if for some reason the applicant were to make the changes that are recommended, is the project still alive and viable or no?
If it came back to us with the changes that I suggested for, I would support.
So that you could, so that, so that then this board could literally make those findings?
Yes.
And is that, does that, is that, 'cause we, sometimes we kind of do things, 'cause we don't quite know how to do things. We do, we do weird things and then we find out later that we can't really do what we thought we were doing. So I'm just.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gottsinger, first of all, I won't let you do something you can't do today. And you're not, because you're only taking conceptual action, pending findings. Until you take final action, you really haven't taken any action at all.
Oh, okay, great. So within this.
So next, in January, next year, this matter will be before you and, and we will bring, I mean, I could sit here and go through every conceivable option that could occur, but I don't think that's a particularly productive thing. At the moment, we will, we, our plan is to come back to you with findings reflecting your conceptual action today. And if something else occurs in the meantime, we will address it appropriately and bring it back. Okay?
I'm gonna rec, I think I can recognize Mr. Easton.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Berg. Could you mention again your, your suggestions?
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall.
Infinity pool. And the fill portion of your.
Lawn.
The lawn.
Lawn. And retaining walls and the pool.
Right. 'Cause I don't think those fit into, from a visual standpoint, they're intrusive into the environment, don't look, don't fit what I would say is the natural, they don't fit into the natural landscape because they are, they're too much estate padded out, and I just don't think it fits when you put it on top of the knoll. If that was down in the, in the valley, no problem, but not, not in that visible a location.
And relating to the retaining walls, could I ask Ms. Mayshur a question?
Sure.
Did you calculate as the length of the retaining wall, the retaining wall going up the driveway and at the guest house? Otherwise, I'm feeling that 400 feet is not the length of the retaining walls around the pad of the house.
It's actually 450 was the calculation, so it's, it's a substantial amount. And it's, for me, it's the linear nature. It's, it's a linear land form that's really very visible. It's just not a natural land form.
Okay.
Director? No? I think we are.
Mr. Chair.
Would you like to?
Should it be mentioned that if we see a new project?
Continue this discussion.
There will be a new project. And we may, we may not like the new project for other reasons. Is that true?
I don't know. I think that's why I keep saying, I say everything there is to say we've taken.
I mean, I, I don't wanna mislead the applicant and just have them come back with a smaller retaining wall and et cetera and think it's gonna be done. It may not.
Well, that's why I suggested house location and house size, I think are the, are one and two of five with the applicant.
Okay, location, house location, house size. Good, all right. That covers a lot.
So we are committed, January, yes or no?
Maybe.
Mr. Chair, I, I.
No.
In January, we'll come back with findings for denial and whatever else may have transpired in between. So I don't know.
We don't have any, I don't believe we have any further business in front of us, so.
Stay tuned. Well, actually, I did wanna make a comment. I thought maybe we should end on a lighter note, but it's totally unrelated to this project.
Oh, well, that's a good thing.
I want to be done. At least I think it's a lighter note.
Okay, please.
So the GATV folks took Commissioner Phillips' comments quite seriously this morning about not being able to tell who's speaking during certain times of the agenda. And had some suggestions. Some of those require installation of an additional camera in the room. I don't know if that's financially feasible, but there is some limitations on the way that they can film your meetings or record your meetings because there's only two cameras and they keep one camera at a distance. And then during staff presentations, they have one focused at this table. And when they think that the hearing is moving more toward the commission, then they have the near camera focused on you, but they can't immediately switch it. So, so they're, they're, they're looking at some options and we'll come back in January and let you know, know we're out.
I, I don't, I don't think we were necessarily suggesting you had to, you know, do full production studio of us.
Although I did notice, I did notice when the commission was deliberating this afternoon that commissioners were framed very well.
I did, I did see that we got, we got some, you know, headshots.
We got some airtime.
Because we only have a viewing audience of one, so.
Apparently Michael Phillips' mom or something. I don't know.
I actually think what I, what I saw on this, from my perspective, what I saw on the screen addressed a lot of what Commissioner Phillips.
So, um, anyway, so I just thought I would, would leave it on that note and wish everybody a very happy holiday season and we'll see you in January.
Happy holidays and, and thank you so much for all your, your hard efforts. Sorry to keep you so late today.
That's all.
And we're adjourned.
Thank you.